Hey, everyone. Welcome to the September 30th meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Fritz.
Here.
Fish. Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone. I think we'll have some of our colleagues joining us momentarily. There they are. Good morning, Commissioner Fish. Welcome to this meeting of the City Council. We have some citizens signed up for communications. We'll take them first, then we'll move into the rest of our council calendar, likely starting with the proclamation at 9:45. If you're here to speak on a regular council calendar item, you can just sign up with our clerk and let her know that you'd like to do that on a particular item. We typically allow people three minutes to testify. If you give us your name, that's all you need to do. You don't have to give us your address unless you're a registered lobbyist. Let us know that. We typically maintain the rules of decorum in this council chambers. We almost always manage to do that, and so we want your help with that. And that is, if you agree with someone and want to indicate your support, feel free to give them a thumbs up or a wave of the hand. And if you disagree with them, give them a polite hand gesture to the contrary. But we ask that we not make vocal demonstrations in favor or against our fellow citizens' points of view here, so we can all be heard. And with those fairly simple rules of procedure out of the way, let's call on our clerk to read item 988.
Request of Colleen Kellogg to address council regarding the city's plan for dealing with homelessness and stable housing.
Good morning. Welcome. Yes, please.
Thank you for allowing me to address the council. My name's Colleen Kellogg. I live in southwest Portland with my husband and two children. I teach second grade at Mont Clair Elementary, and I've brought four members of our social justice committee with me today. And I will say that I signed up to do this ahead of time, so this week's news and all that's happening may have changed how I wrote this, but I'm going to move forward. I'm concerned about the apparent growing homeless population in our city. I spend a lot of time driving through the industrial east side for my children's various sports practices.
Just to interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
If your students and kids would like to come join you up here, that would be okay.
Okay.
Would you like to come sit up here, too?
If they don't mind being on TV.
Or just maybe just stand behind her. Oh, they've got chairs for you. Okay.
Um.
We always show special courtesy to students here.
Well, thank you. That was really nice.
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so I spend a lot of time on the industrial east side, and the tents just seem to be increasing exponentially. In our own neighborhood, we've noticed people sleeping in our parks, under access ramps to the freeway, and it pulls at our heartstrings. It's just, you know, sad. Last week, Mayor, you suggested that the city declare a state of emergency in regard to the homeless crisis. Before this announcement, I was curious what the city's end game was regarding safe and affordable housing for all in Portland. I recognize that homelessness is a multi-pronged problem, or we recognize, involving possible, but not exclusively, mental health as well as physical health issues, possible drug addiction, and lack of employment opportunities. It is hard to imagine addressing those separate issues when folks don't have access to stable housing. With the state of emergency declaration, and then I know we listened to your announcements downstairs. We didn't hear all of them. We got here about 9:10. What specific steps does the council foresee, and are there any actions citizens can take to help provide dignity, safe, and stable housing for the most vulnerable in our community? It seems that shelter beds are only a short-term fix. Rather, radical ideas may be the only way to influence systematic change in the way our city reverses the homeless trend. I'm not sure what these ideas might be, but there must be model programs in other cities that have successfully tackled this complex issue. Again, downstairs, we heard there were some plans, but we'd like to know exactly what specific action items, other than shelter beds, we might expect to see, when they might take place, and how will they be sustainably funded?
Great questions. And actually, we want to solicit your ideas and also students' ideas, because when the council takes up this proposal for declaring an emergency, we're really looking for what tools do people suggest that we use. You've got a city council that's committed to working collaboratively on this issue among ourselves and with the county and with the housing authority. But we also depend on volunteers, a lot. And there are churches and other groups that want to do more in terms of helping the homeless. So your students' ideas, your ideas over the next few weeks in particular, would be very helpful. So I hope you keep them coming. Email us, call us. Come back next week if you can, and come back at other council sessions, because we're going to be talking about this a lot.
So the summit that you referenced downstairs, is that something that if we were to email, that could possibly be discussed or used as talking points?
We're going to be meeting with other west coast mayors here in Portland, and so we're looking for ideas from those cities and also to share ones from here. So that would be very helpful.
All right. For those of us who are relying on Twitter for the feed from downstairs, could you give us a quick summary of what the proposal is?
The Home for Everyone Consortium, along with a couple of our colleagues here, laid out a proposal this morning to invest an additional $30 million of city and county money in the Home for Everyone Plan, both providing more shelter space for this winter and more rapidly housing folks that are looking for transitional housing from shelter to long term. So we're going to flesh that plan out. Mark Jolyn is our staff person who leads this combined effort between the city and the county. So he's going to have a specific plan and proposal for us. But it's basically upping our game by a $30 million increment of how much the city and the county are investing into housing and homeless services.
Mayor, before we lose this group, could we ask the kids to come out and stand with us and get a picture?
That's a great idea. Come on out.
Certainly love it. Why don't you come on up behind the dais?
And their teacher.
Of course.
Why don't they sit in the chairs?
Yeah, why don't you guys sit in the chairs? Everyone got a chair here, honey? I grew up in Mont Clair. If you want, you can go back and look at the offices to see if you've maybe rearranged things when you get in there.
Well, thank you for having us. I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for you all.
Thank you.
Okay, that was great. Thank you for coming. Let's take the next communications item, which is 989, please.
Request of Rachel Bell to address council regarding the Tall Trees of Portland Art Exhibit and Companion Book.
Good morning.
Good morning. So my name is Rachel Bell, and I would like to thank Mayor Hales, Commissioner Fritz, Saltzman, and Fish for letting me speak to you today on behalf of Overcut Press, the Tall Trees of Portland Art Book, and art exhibit that will take place in the City Hall atrium starting next week. I would also like to personally thank Mayor Hales for proclaiming next Tuesday, October 6th, as the Tall Trees of Portland Day here in Portland. It's a day to celebrate the working artist and thriving creative culture in Portland. At this point, some of you are probably thinking, why, yes, we do have some great tall trees in Portland. You wouldn't be the first to think that's what this book is about. The tall trees represented in this page, though, are really more about artists and craftmakers who have the courage and conviction of their art to stand tall. The term "tall tree" is taken from a Japanese proverb that says, "The tall tree catches the most wind." In other words, to stand out, to stand tall, you risk being knocked down, something these Portland-based artists risk every day in their work. Matt Wagner, who's the curator of the upcoming show and the author of the book, not only assembled over 30 of Portland's most vibrant working artists, he exhibits the qualities of these tall trees as he works to bring these and other artists to a broader audience around the world. While you may not know his name, you will certainly recognize the influence he has on art in Portland. Wagner is the owner of Hillion Gallery in Old Town. He's worked with Travel Portland at events in Tokyo where he introduces Portland artists to art collectors in Asia. He's a founding board member of the Forest for the Trees Mural Festival, which just completed its third year. He's partnered with numerous brands on projects ranging from artists-in-residence programs at Nike to curating beer labels for gigantic brewing. And most recently, he curated a sculpture show at the Portland Art Museum featuring three local artists: A.J. Fosseck, Blaine Fontana, and Peter Gronquist. In this upcoming show at City Hall, Portland residents and visitors will have an opportunity to see recent works by all of the artists featured in the book. Some of these artists, all who live and work in Portland, have shown at major galleries around the globe. Recently, artist Josh Keyes found himself invited to contribute art to Banksy's Dismal Land Show, an art show that made headlines around the world. Jewelry designer Beth Wagner has been commissioned to make custom jewelry that has become a featured part of the storyline in several episodes of the TV show Grimm. And when you walk through the halls of Dornbecker Children's Hospital, you'll be greeted by murals created by Mariana Hoggett. The work of these tall trees artists surrounds you every day in Portland. As their art reaches other corners of the world, it's clear they represent the independent spirit of the city they call home, Portland. So in closing, I would like to invite all of you to attend the opening reception for the Tall Trees of Portland Art Show next Tuesday, October 6th, at 4:00 PM in the City Hall atrium, and to view the works on display through Thursday, October 15th. In addition, if any of the council members would like to take a look at the Tall Trees of Portland book, it is on loan to Commissioner Saltzman's office. You can speak to Jenny in his office, and she can make it available to you.
Commissioner Fish's office.
Oh, sorry.
We're often confused. Rachel, I have a copy of the book. We're excited to host you. Thanks to, is it Hillion Gallery?
Hillion Gallery.
Hillion Gallery and Overcut Press. And next week is a, we have two great things that are happening, what I want to just announce to the public. On October 5th, we'll be welcoming your exhibit, and we're excited to have that. October 8th, which is Thursday at 12:30, we'll be celebrating Portlandia's 30th birthday.
Wow.
Put both in your calendar.
Statue, not the TV show. Right.
Statue.
I was going to say, I think I missed a few seasons of that, celebrating.
I'm not allowed to give it away, but I will say that the most famous singer in Oregon may be performing. I can't say anything more than that.
Thank you very much. I'm really glad, Commissioner Fish and Rachel, that we're using that atrium as an art space. Atrium, that's maybe what we should call it, because it really is intended to be community space. It's not just an office building for us. So thank you for livening it up with art, and let's do more of that. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Okay, 990.
Request of David D. Red Thunder to address council regarding comp plan for West Hayden Island.
David, are you here? Okay, looks like you might not be. Let's take 991, then, please.
Request of Evan Ross to address council regarding lawlessness and crime in the Old Town Chinatown neighborhood.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Evan Ross, and I'm a northeast Portland resident. I own a bike tour and rental shop downtown in Old Town Chinatown. I have for about eight years. I brought a handout this morning. Hopefully, you got it. It just has kind of some bullet points and some suggestions that I brought today. I'm interested in working with the city and with council to try to find some solutions. I'm also a board member of the Old Town Chinatown Community Association, and we are interested in improving the neighborhood, of course, for the benefit of everybody. Thank you for continuing to work on these issues in our community and for taking the time to listen to my concerns today. I was able to attend a meeting of stakeholders on these issues yesterday, hosted by Mayor Hales. Thank you. I feel like there's some great momentum that has come from the reaction from the community that enough is enough, and it's time for some long-term solutions. I've had a long, sharp increase in complaints from my employees and my customers about not feeling safe and being harassed or threatened while trying to enjoy the Tomacall Waterfront Park, along with North Park Blocks. And so that is one of the reasons that I'm here to talk to you today. I'm heavily involved in my community through participating in the Community Association, and as an entrepreneur that started his business in 2008, I like to tackle challenges. But I decided to come and speak with you today after I was attacked outside my business. On June 20th, I exited my business to find that someone had broken into my car across the street and was actively trying to steal it. I had already approached the vehicle when I realized there was someone in there, and they reacted by pulling out a knife and exiting the car trying to stab me. I was able to defend myself with an empty five-gallon Culligan water jug, the only thing that I had in my hand at the time, besides my phone in which I was frantically calling 911 for help. The police responded quickly, and it took four offers to subdue the individual who was fighting to escape. Later, we found that they were high on meth and heroin. You may have seen the article in The Oregonian. I'd like to point out that our community is dealing with two different population groups, at least two, and I believe we also talked about this yesterday, and that the community is becoming more and more aware. On one hand, there are Oregon residents who have housing needs because they struggle with unemployment, low income, mental health needs, and/or addiction issues. And on the other hand, we have traveling gangs of individuals who we usually might refer to as service-resistant. It is this second group that I would like to focus on today. The problem lies with behaviors, persons choosing to commit crime instead of focusing on specific populations. It's not illegal to be homeless, and I am a homeless rights advocate, but committing crimes is what is illegal, and I think that is what we should enforce. And so you can see on the handout, I'm advocating for increased foot patrol in Old Town Chinatown, more consistent enforcement of existing laws regarding camping, school-done drug use, et cetera, reaching out to other cities such as Salt Lake City that has put together some great plans and has had really effective outcomes from their housing the homeless with long-term housing, more aggressive officer recruitment, and also creating an urgent plan and solution for indoor housing.
Thank you. Thanks very much. We appreciate your advocacy and your volunteering in the community, and we're also really glad you're okay. That was a scary moment, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and have a good day.
Okay, 992, please.
Request of Trina Sutton to address council regarding her backyard homeless transitional camp.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Trina Sutton. I've spoke before to this council before, and two of you on the panel right now. I came here to talk about a proposed transitional area called My Backyard. That's the name we chose for it. But it was, I had a really unique experience last night. I went to Gresham City Council. They finally figured out they have homeless in Gresham. So it was packed. We had 150 people there, standing room only. And I am not going to embellish this one little bit. It's on record. Police, everybody, presidents of neighborhood associations, faith-based community, civic organizations, private citizens, every single person that stood up and talked said, "The only viable answer right now is to put in more transitional areas." Now, these are not overnighters. These are people who would go and be in a safe place and transition into permanent housing, get back into the community. My people in the central southeast, which is off of 82nd, that is what they want. We cannot confuse, which I applaud the gentleman over here, criminality with homelessness. They're not synonymous. The homeless people that I represent do not want the criminals there anymore. Sometimes their lives involve criminal activities such as drug use. So what I'm saying is, we need to be progressive here, and I want to really applaud Mayor Hales over this declaration of emergency for homeless. That is very progressive. Something else Mayor Hales did, he went out with a couple of my friends that are park rangers and visited my people over there. And I knew he was going, but I chose to not go out there. David asked me to, one of the park rangers, and I said, "No, I don't want to influence. You need to go out," and I want him to see what I see every single day. I need to put many people into areas. I have so many allies. This is not a Trina Sutton project. This, I don't bring my board in because they work during the day. I have to have something tangible. There is a piece of property on 105th and Foster. Now, a police officer brought this to my attention. He also brought it to my attention that his brother up in Washington has shipping containers that he's willing to donate. Those are $2,000 apiece to get here, and he already renovated shipping containers for the U.S. Marshal Service. We can put people into these transitional camps, give them safety that are drug and alcohol-free, 24-hour security, just like Right to Dream 2, and give them a real shot at succeeding in life, because they're not safe out there either. I don't know if anyone here would have been aware of it. We had a predator over there who sexually assaulted a 66-year-old man. U.S. Marshals were looking for him, Clackamas Sheriff's Office, Portland Police. Transit cops got him, but you know how they got him? Because homeless people provided the intel to get them. They don't want the drug dealers out there. They don't want any of these people out there. People have got to stop confusing criminals with homeless. They are not the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trina. Thank you for what you're doing. Thanks. Okay. Even for things we love, we shouldn't clap, Joe, but I can't blame you much. Okay, let's move, please, to our consent calendar. We have a request to pull 994. I think that's the only consent item anyone's requested to remove, right? So let's take a vote, excuse me, vote, please, on the balance of the consent calendar.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye.
Mayor, in terms of managing our calendar, I will be on the regular agenda, pulling back 1004 and 1005 to my office.
Okay.
In case anyone's here to testify on those.
All right. Thank you for letting people know. So those will be, when we get to those items, they'll be returning to Commissioner Fish's office until further notice. Excuse me. Okay, let's move on, please, to item 993. I think Javier Manias is here. I hope so.
993, proclaim September 15 to October 15, 2015, to be Hispanic Heritage Month in Portland.
Javier, do you have the copy of the proclamation?
I already have this.
Okay, good. Well, I want to welcome everyone here to talk about this today, particularly Javier, who's going to read the Spanish version of this proclamation.
Actually, I apologize. Kellin is going to be reading the Spanish, and I'll just be making some few remarks.
Okay, thank you. Well, why don't I start and read the English version, then the Spanish, and then we'll turn it over to you. "Whereas the Hispanic heritage of the United States extends historically over five centuries and has been a consistent and vital influence in our country's growth and prosperity, and whereas the definition of Hispanic is tied to national origin or Spanish culture regardless of race, Hispanics represent people with origins from 24 different countries, including the United States, Mexico, Puerto Rico, the Dominican Republic, Cuba, Guatemala, Belize, El Salvador, Costa Rica, Honduras, Nicaragua, Panama, Colombia, Peru, Ecuador, Paraguay, Uruguay, Brazil, Venezuela, Argentina, Bolivia, Chile, and Spain. They reflect an array of distinct and vibrant cultures that have enriched our community in valuable ways. And whereas Hispanics continue to be the fastest-growing population in Oregon and represent 12.3% of the state's population, in Portland, there are over 60,974 people of Hispanic descent, making up 10% of our city's population. While Portland's overall population grew in 2013 by 1.2%, the rate of growth for the city's Hispanic population for the same year was 6.9%. And whereas Hispanics have supported Portland's economy with a myriad of contributions in the fields of commerce, science, technology, public service, health, and more, today, their purchasing power in Portland is nearly $4 billion and continues to grow. Whereas Portland recognizes the many organizations, institutions, and people helping Hispanics overcome disparities such as poor health outcomes, low educational attainment, to ensure that they remain a thriving community. And whereas Hispanics make up 3% of the city of Portland's governmental workforce, to attract more Hispanics to city jobs and to support them throughout their careers attract more Hispanics to city jobs and to support them throughout their careers with the city, the Unidos Latinos Americanos, or ULA, City Employee Affinity Group has recently been established. Now, therefore, I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim September 15 to October 15, 2015, to be Hispanic Heritage Month in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this month. So if you'd like to read it again, please, in Spanish.
Thank you, Mayor Hales and Commissioners. My name is Carolina Iretta Gonzalez, and I work with the Bureau of Transportation, and I'll be reading the proclamation in Spanish. Dado que la herencia hispana en los Estados Unidos se extiende históricamente más de cinco siglos y ha sido una influencia constante y vital en el crecimiento y prosperidad de nuestro país. Dado que la definición de hispano está ligada al origen nacional o la cultura con influencia española, sin importar cuál sea la raza, los hispanos representan más de 24 diferentes países de origen, incluyendo los Estados Unidos, México, Puerto Rico, República Dominicana, Cuba, Guatemala, Belize, El Salvador, Costa Rica, Honduras, Nicaragua, Panama, Colombia, Peru, Ecuador, Paraguay, Uruguay, Brasil, Venezuela, Argentina, Bolivia, Chile, y España. Replejan una variedad de culturas distintas y valiosas que han endecidido nuestra comunidad en forma notable. Dado que los hispanos continúan siendo la población con más rápida tasa de crecimiento en Oregon y representan el 12% de la población, en Portland hay más de 60,974 personas de origen hispano que representan el 10% de la población. Mientras que la población general de Portland creció un 1.2% en el 2013, la tasa de crecimiento de la población hispana de la ciudad fue del 6.9% en el mismo año. Dado que los hispanos han contribuido a la economía de Portland con un sinnúmero de aportaciones en las áreas de comercio, ciencia, tecnología, servicios públicos, salud, y otras. Al día de hoy, su poder de adquisición en Portland es casi 4,000 millones y continúa aumentando. Dado que Portland reconoce las diversas organizaciones, instituciones, y personas que ayudan a los hispanos a superar desigualdades como salud precaria y bajos rendimientos escolares para asegurar que continúan prosperando sus comunidades. Dado que los hispanos representan un 3% de la fuerza laboral del ayuntamiento de la ciudad de Portland. La Asociación de Empleados Unidos Latinoamericanos, ULA, ha sido restablecida recientemente para poder atraer más hispanos a trabajar para el ayuntamiento de la ciudad. Por lo tanto, hoy, yo, Charlie Hales, Alcalde de la Ciudad de Portland, Oregon, proclamo que del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 2015 sea mes de la herencia hispana en Portland, y invito a todos los residentes a celebrar este mes.
Thank you very much, Carolina. Thank you. Javier.
Thank you, Mayor Hales, esteemed city commissioners. My name is Javier Mena. I'm at the Housing Bureau. Although I have been in front of you many times, I appreciate this rare opportunity to talk to you about an issue other than housing, but something that is equally important to me, I'm very passionate about, and that is the Latino Hispanic Chicago community. The city under your leadership has emphasized diversity and equity as a key value of what we do and how we do it. However, due to many challenges and pressures, this conversation sometimes gets narrowed. We, as a city, must strive to consistently expand the lengths to ensure inclusivity. Our communities of color, especially those with limited resources and limited access to government, including our Native American, Latino, Asian Pacific Islander brothers and sisters, are negatively impacted by this narrow focus. The Hispanic Latino community, like many others, is a rich and very diverse community. We have a challenging history, in part due to government action and inaction. Many feel marginalized, some lose their sense of culture and belonging. Now, our immigrant brothers and sisters, who have traveled from as far away as Chile or Ecuador like myself, or Mexico, come to a city they see as a paradise full of opportunity. Yet, I do not believe those opportunities are available to everyone. As of 2013, the city's Latino population is a little over 10%. According to the Office of Equity and Human Rights Report, Hispanic Latinos are just 5.1% of the city employees. If you narrow that to leadership and executive positions, it's down to 2.4%. We can do better. We must do better. It is up to all of us, you elected officials, my esteemed ULA colleagues, myself, to maximize the Latino community's potential. In doing so, not only will the city benefit as an employer, but the entire city of Portland will be recognized for the rich, diverse, and welcome community that it is. We have the power to do this. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Thank the council comments. Just want to say, in order to get the change we want in a more equitable city, we've got to have advocacy in the community and inside city government. So that's why it's so important that our managers and leaders in the bureaus, which you two represent, are being those kinds of advocates, and that we have this affinity group to help make sure that we're advancing our goals in our own ranks and in our own leadership at the city. So thank you.
I'm very happy to work with Amalia Alacundamaris, our great Latina leader of the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and also very much appreciate that Christine Nieves has been participating in your group. She's my executive assistant and has recently been promoted to policy advisor because she's so great at figuring stuff out. And so I appreciate her work with you and the affinity groups that come together under the diverse empowered employees of Portland within the Office of Equity and Human Rights. Thank you for all your work.
Thanks very much. Thank you both.
I just had one last comment.
Please.
I just wanted to say that we have students here from Portland State University, from Casa Latina, so we have some Latino students here.
Stand up, please. Where are you? In the group? Welcome, students. We always break the rules. Thank students.
And just that, I hope that we are able to bridge a stronger relationship specifically with students of color from PSU so that we can open the doors here at the City of Portland to students that are looking for jobs, opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Okay, I think it's time to move to our regular agenda. Let's, we could take the polled items. Sorry, I see we have staff from the Police Bureau here on one item. We might have on more than one. So let's take 994, which was the item that was polled from consent. We'll do that first.
994, accept a grant in the amount of $437,882 and appropriate $300,000 for fiscal year 2015-16 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, fiscal year 15, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program to prevent or reduce crime and violence.
Good morning, Catherine. Welcome.
Good morning. This, as the ordinance said, is to accept the JAG award, or the JAG grant that we applied for back in June. The JAG funds were made under disparate certification to the City of Portland, to Multnomah County, and the City of Gresham. Our award, the City of Portland, will receive $210,099. Multnomah County will receive $165,081, and Gresham $62,702. The Police Bureau plans to use JAG funding for the following two items. One, to hire one FTE Senior Administrative Specialist for the Police Bureau Detectives' Sex Crime Unit to work as a victim advocate. The SAS will provide trauma-informed direct services and ongoing support to victims of sexual assault and their families throughout an investigation, during the court proceedings, and continuing services beyond the conclusion of the investigation. That will, that amount will be $100,099 to fund that. The second item is to contract with LifeWorks Northwest for $110,000 to coordinate treatment, temporary housing, counseling, and training opportunities for individuals involved in prostitution-related offenses. The Multnomah County will retain .36 FTE as a north neighborhood deputy district attorney for 12 months, and retain a .45 FTE parole and probation officer for 12 months, and hire one FTE enforcement sergeant for three months. The City of Gresham will use their allocated portion to purchase scheduling software for their Police Bureau personnel. At a, that's the total award, $62,702 for Gresham.
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you for laying that out for us in detail. That's great. Questions?
We get this grant every year, it seems. So is the senior analyst that you mentioned in the Police Bureau, is that person already employed?
No, that would be a hire.
A new position.
So are we, is this additional money, or we're using it in a different way?
We're using it in a different way.
And what have we been?
As what we've used in the past.
So we hire the person for a temporary one-year position?
Correct.
And decide what's the most urgent thing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for Catherine? Thank you very much. Anyone want to speak on this item?
Did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I think Lightning.
He doesn't want to speak.
He doesn't want to speak?
Okay. All right, then, if there's no one wants to speak on this item, oh, you do. Sorry, Joe, watch out.
My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. Once again, we object to these items being slid underneath the table. No discussion. That's what consent agenda is, in case anybody doesn't understand it. Usually, it's just paying bills and normal stuff, but when you get into $300,000, I think the people really should hear from staff what it is. So once again, we're saying to you, don't put these things on consent agenda. Put them on the regular business. The other thing that bothers me about this is the traditional way of handling these grants is to hire people, and that's what you're doing again. What does that have to do with the person that is on the street? What does that have to do with the person that is involved in drugs? Has nothing to do with them. You just hire people, and then the year, if the grant goes away, they get fired. Stop hiring people and use the money for what it's supposed to be used for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Charles Johnson, and I think that in the past, we've done a much better job here in council chambers, bringing forth people who've directly experienced trauma from human trafficking and non-consensual sex work. And I agree with Mr. Walsh that the issue is so important, it would have been better if you'd used this as a regular agenda item to bring forth to this community the work that's behind the funding of this .45 FTE and this little shell game of work. I just want to encourage the council to engage directly, for all of you, to make sure that you get to events where people who, you know, great for people who've had success, who with working through the police department and nonprofits have been able to no longer have to ply their wares on 82nd or wherever, but also to make sure some of this, these human resource hours go to engaging with recidivists and repeat offenders and find out what they experienced that led them to go back to such a traumatic way of life, that the reason they felt that the program wasn't what could rescue them from sexual exploitation. So I hope you'll make a note in the how you manage this program so that recidivists and people who didn't get assisted will have a chance to get their voice heard and maybe find a way to help even more people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Then let's take a roll call vote, please, on the ordinance.
Saltzman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. Didn't see it. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Robert West. I'm from the police 911, and I noticed that they're talking about having supervisors. I find that police dealing with, you know, street crime, oftentimes it's the unit officers. I think the city'd be much better off having car units than someone sitting behind a desk. And I wanted to bring that up. I also think that it should be an agenda item that people can talk about. I went out there to look at, see what there was to sign up. All I seen was the marijuana issue and another, and sergeant's towing. I feel that something like this is important due to the amount of money that it should be an agenda item that people should be able to talk about and discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much. All right. Okay. All right, anyone else? Then let's take the vote, please.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hales?
I'm really glad that we, as a community, are focusing on the victims of prostitution the way we do, and on making sure that the purchasers of prostitution are the ones that are getting the enforcement attention. That's the right way to do this. And then when we do identify victims, to have advocacy and services for them is the right kind of policing. Thank you. Aye. Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda. 997.
Extend term of street closure program in Old Town Chinatown for a period of one year.
This is the second reading, a vote on the presentation we had last week. Roll call.
Saltzman?
Well, I'm pleased to support extending the street closure program. As we heard last week, it seems to have garnered a lot of support in the Old Town Chinatown community, so thanks, Mayor Hales, for doing this. Aye.
It's not an emergency, so we keep going.
It's not.
Right, it's not.
This is the second reading.
Yes.
I want to thank Chad Stover, who's been shepherding this from the beginning, and it started with a lot of controversy, and now it seems to be working with a lot of buy-in. So nice job at the street level, and Charlie, I think this is very promising, and we're learning some things. So let's extend it. Aye.
Hales?
We sure are, and Chad and this community have worked very well together. Well done, Chad, and again, look forward to both the physical changes that are coming. We hope next weekend in Third Avenue, and the community building that's going on in Old Town Chinatown. More to come. Aye. Okay, 998.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with TRIMET for transit police services.
Okay, I know there's a proposed amendment here, and Assistant Chief Modica is coming up to discuss this with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. I also have a staff member from TRIMET, the Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Harry Supporter, who could join me up here as well.
Oh, good. Yeah, please. Come on up, Gary. Okay, there were some council questions about this last week. There is a proposed amendment, so walk us through this, please.
All right, good morning. And yes, we're returned to the table. We had an opportunity to answer the questions presented to us by Commissioner Fritz, and we put work into making sure that there was some binding language in the ordinance about the priorities of transit policing and the law enforcement services provided to TRIMET. Commissioner, did you, did you want to?
Fritz, did you have some questions? Do you have some issues you want to discuss? And I do think we need to act on the amendment.
Right. Two, I really appreciate meeting with both TRIMET and Chief Modica. My concerns are still present. However, what we've compromised on in the ordinance today is two amendments to state that the main priority of the TRIMET Transit Police Division is not enforcement of fair requirements, but to provide safety and security services for the TRIMET system. And then number four, in the findings, TRIMET established the Transit Equity Advisory Committee in 2013 to provide input and guidance to the TRIMET General Manager on fairness and equity considerations. The Transit Equity Advisory Committee is composed of representatives from communities of color, OPA. What's OPA?
It's the, Opal is the. Opal.
It's supposed to be Opal, then, so I amend that to Opal. That's supposed to be Opel, then, so I amend that to Opel. Environmental justice, the Noma Youth Commission, and Native American Youth and Family Association, and other community leaders. The Transit Equity Advisory Committee is committed to consider impacts regarding race, economic status, houselessness, and fair enforcement. So I move the addition of those two findings.
Okay, Commissioner Fritz moved items three and fours, our second.
Okay.
Further discussion, we'll put those on the table, take testimony. Um, roll call on accepting those amendments.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you very much for working with me. I understand that the Portland Police also have an advisory group that, um, we could add more folks who are experiencing houseless to, houselessness to, to help advise how you operate, and so I'm, um, seeing a nod from the police commissioner that we can make that happen. I appreciate you working with me. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hales?
I want to, uh, thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for focusing on this issue and working with the police bureau in TriMet. I think this amendment really captures the sense of the council and the concerns we heard from the community about what instructions we give to our public safety professionals about what the city's priorities are. And I think this captures this very well, and I suspect Assistant Chief Modica and his team will have no trouble following that policy. Aye. Thank you. Any concerns, any problems?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll take testimony, and, um, if there's anyone who wants to speak on the amendment, come on up.
My name is, uh, Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. We applaud those two amendments. Sound really good. Can we implement them? I don't know. It seems to me that there's a, there's a, a problem that we have vacancies in our police department. I heard thirteen, fifteen. We're looking for thirteen to fifteen officers to fill different positions in our police department. I may be wrong on that, because I'm, I'm relying on my memory. But I'm also, uh, concerned of the number of police officers we're sending to TriMet. That doesn't make sense to me. If we need officers, why are we sending people to TriMet? I don't like the basic idea of sending officers with guns to TriMet, because what are they doing? They're investigating crime. How do they do that? They look, you know, I have never been approached by a police officer for TriMet or the bus. I've been riding them now for ten years. Never been approached. Why is that? Because I'm white? It's because I'm old. I don't fit the profile. That's what goes on all the time. So these amendments are really good, Commissioner, and I applaud you for that. However, you have to have goodwill. You have to have these police officers say, "Look, you're there to prevent crime. Someone selling drugs, bust them. Someone looks like they don't, can't afford to get on the bus, leave them alone. That's not your job. Your job is to protect us and serve us. That's what you're supposed to be doing there, Mr. Police Officer." So stop screwing around with college kids that just walk. I saw a cop walk up to a college kid that just walked out of college and check her, and she was overdue. And I don't know what the result was, because my bus came. That's not his job. So again, we object to you sending your police officers to TriMet, because I don't trust TriMet. I don't trust them.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning. King Bishop Styles, man about town. Um, I applaud the amendments. I really appreciate the safety, um, aspect, um, because I too have experienced, um, not personally myself, but have watched, um, women, young men, um, be harassed for either not having an ID, um, and being under seventeen, or being five minutes over their, uh, their ticket. Um, so, uh, I agree with Joe into the fact that, you know, there, there needs to be a focus on exactly what officers are to be up to, and that is to keep us safe and not to be harassed, uh, for not having an ID, um, or being five minutes over our transfer ticket. Um, yeah, I think that is a better use of all of our time and our money, and I really appreciate the work that you all are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Okay, so we have an amended ordinance in front of us, uh, that we can now take action on. Let's do so, please. Roll call.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
I appreciate, Mayor, the additional time to consider this and your leadership of the police bureau. It is all about the implementation. I, um, was both pleased and then further concerned in some of the conversations that I had regarding police enforcing things like people eating on the train and such. And I think that, as I mentioned last week, we do, we should have a community conversation about how we fund TriMet and whether there is a place for at least those under eighteen and other groups to be able to ride for, without paying the fare, since the fare is so, such a small, uh, proportion of how we fund TriMet, but that's a different discussion for a different day. Um, I appreciate the extra time on this. Aye.
Fish?
Commissioner Fritz, thanks for your amendments. Aye.
Hales?
You know, um, the police bureau is a chain-of-command organization. That's good and sometimes not so good. The good, one of the good things about being a chain-of-command organization is that when this council, uh, through me as police, police commissioner, gives the bureau clear instructions and policy goals, they follow them, and they try really hard to make those goals real. So when we said to this police bureau, "We're serious about changing the way we deal with people experiencing mental illness. We're going to follow this Department of Justice settlement beyond the letter," they're working really hard at that, and they're making good changes. When we say equity is a priority, our chief and L. Weatherroy are focusing on equity in this bureau. And when we say, as we are here today, that the priority in our transit system is to keep people safe, not fair enforcement, they'll follow those instructions as well, and I appreciate us being clear about that. It is very important that people using the transit system be safe and feel safe. We have hundreds of thousands of people who get to work that way every day, and I have worked in the transit industry and seen what happens when the customers of a transit agency stop thinking the system is safe. And it is very difficult and expensive, not to mention painful, to recover from that low spot. We don't want to get there. So I think this is good policy that will keep a great transit system safe and accessible and a great ride for everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for your amendments. Aye. Okay, let's move on to, um, nine-ninety-nine.
Authorize purchase of replacement poli- police patrol vehicles.
Do we have to vote on the underlying?
At $2,329,151.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Um, the item, uh, my name is John Hunt. I'm the city fleet manager, and the item before you today is to, uh, do a replacement of vehicles that are well beyond their economic life cycle. Um, we've looked at the age, the cost history, the reliability of the vehicles, and, uh, we've performed mechanical assessments on them, and the vehicles that need to be replaced really need to be replaced. We have put money aside over the life of the vehicle that resides over in the city fleet replacement fund, and the funding is available. Uh, with me today is Officer Garrett Dow, and, uh, he wants to speak to the operational need of this particular style vehicle.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm currently operating as the fleet coordinator for the police bureau and was involved, uh, with the, um, selection and outfit of this vehicle, uh, and trying to determine the best vehicle for the current needs of our officers, and, uh, looking at the various different types of vehicles that are available. The Ford Interceptor Utility, in my opinion, is, is the, the best car for our officers out there. Providing, uh, best legroom, headroom for, uh, the front seat passengers, the officers, for also, uh, prisoners that we may transport or other citizens that we may transport, and also the ever-increasing amount of equipment that we carry, from, uh, first aid supplies to road flares to ballistic shields and spike strips and, uh, and all the various other equipment. Um, the Ford, uh, Crown Victoria, uh, was, uh, a canceled line some years ago from Ford. That vehicle was a favorite among police agencies, but it's no longer available. So this Ford Interceptor Utility is, uh, again, in my opinion, the premier vehicle to replace that vehicle, also offering all-wheel drive, and my experience in Portland with the rain, especially when, uh, we have the leaf season, the very slippery roads that the all-wheel drive provides, uh, superior, uh, road handling and, uh, traction to keep our officers safer, and, uh, especially in wet handling conditions, and the, uh, added profile of the vehicle, uh, as I've been testing it, uh, we see better yielding of citizens as we are running, uh, in emergency response over the lights sirens to, uh, to calls, which should reduce, uh, collisions and provide better safety for officers and citizens alike. Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question.
Please.
Um, so I have a son who's six foot five, so I certainly understand about needing legroom and headroom and such. However, I want to thank Maxine Bernstein at the Oregonian, whose article yesterday said that Seattle found that the new interceptors average eight point four miles per gallon during one test, uh, test period compared with six point seven miles per gallon for the Crown Victorias. Um, and there was an estimate that they get about ten or eleven miles per gallon. That's awful in terms of our, uh, climate action challenges and, and plan, so I had not realized that our current police vehicles were getting that poor of a gas mileage, and I wonder, did you factor that into your considerations?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to a couple of things I think the taxpayers would like to know as well. We, we're buying them through a local dealer, through the, uh, state price agreement, but on the fuel economy piece, there's actually two offerings that Ford has. One is a sedan, and the other one is the Ford Interceptor Utility. It's a unibody construction, so as far as fuel economy, they're almost the same. They're within like one mile per gallon difference. Ford took that into consideration when they built them. Um, so the, uh, the fuel economy won't be a lot different than the, again, their sedan that they offer.
But that's, it's ten miles per gallon.
Yeah. The question is, are there other choices that are more fuel efficient that we considered, and why did we reject those?
I would say that the, the vehicle that we're purchasing is designed for police use, anywhere within the city fleet that we can. In fact, through our climate action plan and the, um, the directive to have twenty percent of our, um, sedan fleet be all-electric vehicles, um, we're doing everything we can to move forward with very clean, efficient vehicles. In the case of the patrol sedan, there's an awful lot of heavy and large equipment that needs to be hauled in the vehicle, and it, it just, it demands this type of vehicle for the type of work that they're doing with it.
Can I ask a question? Is the mile-per-gallon figure you're using based on the assumption that the vehicles being used for routine police work, which is stop and go and, and, you know, or is that, is that apples-to-apples comparison, as if you put a, a car on the highway? Because I, one thing I've learned on ride-alongs is, I, I'm surprised they get a mile per gallon, given the stop-start, you know, the, the way cars are used, but we measure cars based on, you know, standards. So is this the actual mile-per-gallon of the car based on the actual standard, or is it the standard for these cars used by a police officer?
Uh, that's a very good question. The one mile is through Ford Motor Company's, they're testing, uh, in, in the real world, it can change based upon the stop-and-go nature of the, the use of the vehicle. Um, but again, the engines are made very well, and they've maximized, uh, fuel economy, you know, as best that, that can be done at this current point in time with the technology.
Yeah, I think this is going to be a, an interesting ongoing challenge for us. Um, we have some city vehicles that can easily be electric or be the most efficient vehicle around, whether it's a, a Leaf or a Prius, or for those kinds of trips of a building inspector's going out to a job site, that, that, that kind of vehicle might suffice. If, uh, you know, if a, s- city worker in the Portland building is going out on a field operation, that kind of vehicle will suffice. Then we've got fire trucks, backhoes, and police cars, um, and those are sort of workhorses that, um, gasoline engines are still the rule in police cars, and diesel engines are still the rules in, rule in, uh, trucks. But the question is, when, when the next talk, technology comes along, like we're trying to do with electric, can we try to migrate as quickly as possible to something more efficient? I think you're hearing the council would like to do that. We wish it was now.
I know Commissioner Saltzman's got a Highlander, and I'm pretty sure that gets better than ten miles per, per gallon.
Well, that's a good lead into my question. My Highlander is a hybrid, and I'm just wondering, is, are, does Ford make hybrid interceptor vehicles, which do get more fuel efficient, and they, and they make more sense from the physics of it all?
Right now, today, we're, we're buying where there is hybrid or electric, um, options. I think the mayor said it very well, that in kind of a teasing way, you can't put, you know, five yards of hot asphalt in the back of a Prius, you know? So we're trying to kind of balance that out, but, um, we do look at that, and if there is that option, then we're, we're moving in that way with the hybrid option.
The hybrid is not available, is not an option for the interceptor?
No.
And did you look at the Highlander?
We, we're looking at vehicles that are made with a police package, and that means that the braking, its handling, because they're really rigorously tested through the Michigan State Police and LA County and Ford Motor Company to ensure that these vehicles will operate well in, in police use. So they're, they're designed for police patrol.
Just their way to partner, it sounds like it's a, a nationwide thing. Could you, as fleet manager, partner with your other fleet managers and say, "Our councils aren't going to approve us buying vehicles that are ten miles per gallon and get on it and get as a hybrid police vehicle?"
In fact, I am tied with a national network, and there is advisory committees that are put together, and that, you're exactly right, that has come up, and wherever they can increase the fuel economy. In fact, there's even technologies that are put in that, um, reduce, um, idle time and some different technologies that are out there today, but it's a, you, you have, raise a valid point that anything that can be done, and we do have a network where we provide this information back to the manufacturer.
Well, this is a good discussion, and we'll take testimony if there is some, but the direction I'm hearing, and I want to, um, support it, is that, um, first of all, we have, and, and Mr. Hunt, uh, somebody who's a, a national leader who's been recognized for his work in managing our fleet, so we know that you are involved in the nation, in your national professional organization, so that's an opening. I'm also on the Transportation Committee of the, of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So perhaps between several of us who are involved at the national level, uh, we can start talking to other cities about perhaps, uh, a, a bulk effort, if not a bulk purchase, at least bulk influence, um, on, on what's being produced, to try to match the values of our city and our climate action plan in, in the vehicles we buy. Uh, there are other progressive cities like Seattle and San Francisco who also are C-40 cities, so I'm sure they're trying to implement their, so, climate action plans as well. So, um, I think what I'd like to do, my, well, my recommendation, we'll hear from the public, but my recommendation would be proceed with this batch, um, because we've got to have vehicles to replace the ones that are wearing out, but I, I think there's a loud and clear direction here that we want to try to be moving in that direction of efficiency as fast as possible, and maybe even kicking the door open if we have the chance.
Now, would it be helpful, and, and, Mr. Hunt, would it be helpful to have in addition to the resolution, so that it's official council policy? To add a, uh, under the, now therefore the council directs, after A, the procurement officer is authorized to enter into the contract and you're authorized to deliver checks, to add a C, the mayor and police manage, and fleet manager are directed to advocate for the development of more fuel-efficient police vehicles?
I have no problem with that. I think it's essentially in our climate action plan already, but we could put it in here if you'd like.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? So roll call on accepting that amendment.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye, thank you.
Fish?
Mayor, I really like the idea of the cities using their buying power to actually get the industry to respond, so I, I hope, wish you luck with the account, uh, the Conference of Mayors. Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay, thank you both very much. We'll see if there's public testimony on this item. Anyone want to speak? Come on up.
My name is, uh, Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice, for the record. One of the things during the, the discussion that I was thinking about is when we export automobiles to Europe, the EU will not accept them unless they get forty-two miles per gallon. Forty-two. We do about twenty-five here. I think the average is about twenty-five. So I think the commissioners, the questions are really good. The other thing that came into my mind was that the police vehicles in Europe are very small. They're kind of tiny. It's almost like the Pope goes around and rides in all of them. It's interesting to me that we have these gas gossers when we're all saying we have to do something about the climate. So the discussion you had is very good. I have a suggestion. Why not say that this council will not buy vehicles that get less than? And I'm not going to give you, I, I would think twenty miles per gallon, but you guys work on that. But you guys work on that. But that sends a really strong message, that this council wants a minimum of whatever you decide. So when they do buy these police automobiles, and I know it's a restrictive industry and that's problematic, however, you can get around that. Those are details. You can work those. But the council needs to send a strong message. I think Commissioner Fritz is on to something here, and we should say, "Look, if you can send automobiles and you can check this fact, 42 miles a gallon to the EU, or they won't accept them, why in God's name are we so low?" So that's our problem.
Good question.
Thank you.
Morning. Okay, well, I want to bring up a couple--
Put your name back in the record.
Okay, my name is Robert West. I'm with FromThePolice911.com. I want to bring up a couple issues. One is, I go by North Precinct every day, and there's always a bunch of police cars inside the parking lot after shift change. And I find it funny that there's always cars in there and the city needs more cars. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that the city, instead of buying for everything, we should look at what we need for what areas we have. Downtown doesn't need extremely fast police cars. You're not going to send a police car 120 miles an hour down downtown street. A Prius or a fuel economic car would be better for the downtown area. Also, my understanding with the police is that they tend to send officers that are needed from other areas, like for instance, if something happened on 162nd and Stark, they would send officers from North Precinct, because that's probably, that's the closest area. They wouldn't send them from downtown. And so with that, I think the downtown area should definitely have fuel-efficient cars, Priuses or something like that. That would send the community the message that, yeah, we want policing, but we also want fuel economy and we want to be good for the environment. And that's what I wanted to bring up.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Go ahead, Lightning, sorry.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog PDX. I'm absolutely at agreement to be looking at the electric cars, but also have to have a more realistic approach to it, is that, now, my understanding, if you do go electric in the future possibly, that you also get certain tax credits, possibly up to 7,500 per vehicle purchase. And that makes a big difference on the overall price. As you know, on this order here, we're at about 33,000 per vehicle. Now, the only issue I do have on people saying, "Go into smaller cars and let's worry about 10 to 20 more miles per gallon." And again, we're still using fossil fuels currently, so... But where I have an issue on that is to really look at, and I think the gentleman said, is the overall safety factor. If they're in a high-speed pursuit, a larger vehicle with more weight, I mean, come on, let's face it, it's going to be much more beneficial to be in a vehicle like that than some small Prius. So when you're looking at it from a safety factor and the people in the vehicle at high speeds, you don't want to be in a small vehicle, plain and simple. You want to be in a vehicle that it's built, solid, sound, and it's going to protect you if you're in an accident. That's the main thing. So going to these small vehicles out on the street is great, but it's a risk you're going to take out on the highways at a high speed. And my opinion is, safety must be number one. Mileage per gallon is down the list. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, for the record, my name is Charles Johnson. And it's interesting that on this item, we're talking about $2 million worth of cars. And last week, when we were paying attention to the Tri-Met budget, we actually itemized the VIN of a 1987 van. So there's a little bit of, as Commissioner Fritz pointed out, some disconnect on our values. But definitely, some of these Crown Vics are looking a little bit ragged. And I don't have a huge problem with you approving this $2 million purchase, but I think we should really look at leadership and what's happening, especially in the urban core. I'm not an expert. I can't talk about policing and response time in East Precinct and the distances that are needed to cover in the time. But one thing that is a problem here is when I'm downtown, the only police I see are in their cars. And actually, we've been talking about improving community policing. I would rather see police in Priuses, but I would most prefer to see real, actual police officers walking the streets and engaging with real citizens, not driving around in cars. So I hope that while you work this $2 million worth of Ford purchases through the budget, we can also look at giving people the policing that is really, you know, common, actually was common in America for generations. And I understand we have a kind of nice situation where we have less police per capita than some other cities our size and bigger. And I hope that our Portland citizens can keep our act together and maintain that. But it's a valid point that we should look at the whole fleet of police cruisers, and is there a role for cars that are more like European police vehicles, especially in the urban core? And hopefully, some shenanigans through Uber and connections with Lightning's favorite person, Mr. Elon Musk. We can get some ZEV police patrol vehicles that make sense inside the central city area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Then we should take a vote, please, on the amended ordinance.
We need Commissioner Fish back--
Oh, we do? It is an emergency. So let's set that over for a minute, unless he's handy, Rachel. Let's see. There is, oh, there he is. Sorry. Not yet, but be ready. Okay, let's take a roll call now, please.
Saltzman?
Well, I appreciate the discussion, and I hope we can strive to find more fuel-efficient vehicles, but ones that do meet the needs of our police officers and our police bureau. Aye.
Fritz?
I agree, thank you. Aye.
Fish?
My daughter from Andorra is trying to wish her father a happy birthday. We're having a little technology glitch.
So excuse whenever that call comes in.
Aye.
Hales?
Well, I appreciate the discussion and the direction. I will take that to the table at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, because I think there may be a bulk influence and bulk purchasing opportunity there among cities. And we also want to second Mr. Johnson's comment. Under my direction, the police bureau will be using three classes of vehicles that comply with our direction more, and that is, we'll be using shoes, bicycles, and horses in greater number rather than vehicles, wherever that's possible. And we have successfully used walking patrols in the last couple of years in areas like Hawthorne, where it was hugely appreciated by the neighborhood, and they were on their feet. So I agree with that direction. We're, in the police bureau, we're looking for every opportunity we have to expand that type of policing. And that's, of course, not only better for the community, but doesn't use any fossil fuel, at least for that part of the trip. So thank you for the direction. We look forward to maybe having the next fleet purchase be a little different. Aye. Okay, let's take--
Mayor, it's your position that we should keep them out at patrol in order to comply with our climate action plan?
That's right. There's some people that deal with horses might argue with that.
You said expanded? We're not expanding, are we?
There's a subliminal message there, but I just want to, okay, we'll come back to this.
We'll talk about the ponies again, no doubt. Let's take up item number 1,000.
Authorize up to $20 million of interim financing for local improvement projects.
This is a second reading. Roll call vote, please.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
This is a lot of money, and the description doesn't really do justice to what we're doing, but we'll try to get more information in the future. But we did have a presentation last week where Jennifer Cooperman walked us through this in great detail. Aye.
Hales?
Aye, thank you. Okay, item number 1,001, please.
Authorize contract with Sargent's Towing, Inc. for abandoned vehicle towing and storage vehicles.
So Commissioner Novick isn't here, but what I have here as an introduction is the intent of this ordinance is to award a three-year abandoned vehicle towing and storage contract to Sargent's Towing, Inc. Contract provides towing, storage, and disposal of abandoned vehicles parked in the right-of-way as required by the abandoned auto program and requested by the Bureau of Development Service if an abandoned auto is on private property. So good morning, gentlemen. Take us through this, please.
Yes, good morning, Mayor Hales, commissioners. My name's Patrick Kramer. I'm the towing coordinator, P-Bot Regulatory Services. And beside me, I have Donald Hunter. He's a supervisor at Parking Enforcement Division, and he's available for questions specifically regarding the abandoned auto program. The ordinance before you today is to award the abandoned vehicle towing contract to Sargent's Towing. This contract is used by agencies primarily abandoned auto program to remove abandoned autos from city streets. This increases neighborhood livability and promotes public safety. After a competitive bid process through Procurement Services, proposals were evaluated. It was determined that Sargent's Towing had the highest score. On August 11th, the Towing Board of Review voted to recommend to you the award of the contract, Sargent's Towing. If I could just take a brief moment to summarize some of the changes from the previous contract. The first is a reduction in the tower's response time to abandoned vehicle tow's. Previously, it was 24 hours. We reduce that to two hours. Secondly, the successful proposer had a higher bid than the previous contract, so the city will enjoy increased revenues from that. And then there's also a streamlining of the process in which a vehicle owner who appealed the tow of their vehicle and was successful can be refunded their money for that tow. So by your approval of this contract, city will enjoy increased revenues, streamline process for removing abandoned vehicles from the city streets. And with that, I'm open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, questions?
I have a couple. And typically, when we take up towing in this body, it's because there's been complaints from the public about how towing and companies operate. And I know that Senator Abell Gordley, when she was in service, had a great interest in this. She had a staff person who worked on it almost full-time. And there were concerns about performance and customer issues and the like. And I think one of the questions that we need to ask, even though we're talking about abandoned vehicles, so we're talking about essentially cars that are left on the side of the road, is what is Sargent's Towing's record in terms of Better Business Bureau and customer service? And are we forging a partnership with one of the good guys or one of the people that people have concerns about in our community?
Yes, excellent question. Thank you for that. How I'd respond to that is, part of the request for proposals, the RFP, it was evaluated, the companies were evaluated both on past performances of their contracts with the city as well as bully violations. Sargent's came back with no complaints. And Sargent's actually, just for historical purposes, have previously had the abandoned contract, if I remember right, from 1995 to 2010. So they had it for quite some time and were very successful with it. And the city was very happy with their performance at that time. And so we have no reason to doubt that performance this time, too.
That's very, that's very helpful, right? Past performance is an indicator of future performance. And to what extent do abandoned vehicles actually get claimed by someone?
It's very, it's very low. Most of them do not get claimed. Most of them are just auctioned off or scrapped.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have a lot of those examples of someone, a member of the public going to try to claim a car and then having a history of how they dealt with the company in terms of customer service?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, the majority of them don't, the vehicle owners don't have any kind of interaction with the tower. It would basically be if the city was happy with the performance of the towing services for the contract.
You know, on Sunday parkways, the route went through Selwood, Brooklyn and Selwood. And I remember on one of the streets we were going through, there was a totaled car on the road that had a sign on it saying "Free." So if someone was being very enterprising, I don't know they got, no one claimed it.
Seeing that car, I suspect it's still there, that there were no takers unless you've already towed it away because it was abandoned.
And just, would you remind us, when we tow an abandoned car and no one claims it, what do we normally get for that car?
Okay, that's part of the abandoned, the abandoned auto fee. And so any vehicle that's not picked up by the vehicle owner, the contractor pays the abandoned auto program actually a fee, and it's based on a bid that was part of the RFP process that they submit to us.
That's the 75% of index price of the scrap metal value.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's, and that price has been arrived at through a competitive process?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm curious, and maybe our viewers are curious, what constitutes an abandoned auto?
An abandoned auto vehicle, and the city code requires it to have three criterias: either figured to display current registrations, appears inoperable or disabled, or appear wrecked or partially dismantled. It has to fall in one of those three categories to be considered abandoned.
So simply being not current on the plates is enough?
Correct.
And that concerns me, because the goal of this program is to get garbage off the street, right? It's the purely, it's the ones like Commissioner Fish just referenced that's been sitting there and you can't give it away. The goal is not to make money out of this program. And I'm concerned about the new requirement for towing companies to get out within two hours of this. Could you just walk us through what the timeline is from the moment somebody calls in a request for removal of an abandoned auto to the moment that it gets crushed?
When we get a, our department is complaint generated. And when we get the call from the citizen, this time of year, the summertime, if you call in the day, we may not be able to respond to get there for anywhere from five to seven days, because this is our peak season, when the weather get nice. When the weather get nice, we get more calls. Once someone called in and our officer get the case, they go out and see if the vehicle meet the criteria. If it falls on one of these three categories, then they place one of these green tow warnings on the vehicle, and which notifies the owner of the vehicle that they have 72 hours to comply. And so the officer would go back, not quite at 72 hours, because this time of year, again, after we place this warning, that we may not get back to a week, seven days to follow up. If the vehicle is still there, then we proceed with to cite it for abandoned auto and we tow the vehicle away. After we tow the vehicle, we sent out a, through DMV records, we sent out a letter to the last registered owner, letting them know that this vehicle was towed, and they have 15 days to recover the vehicle. After 15 days, by code, it becomes city property to dispose of.
So I'm pretty troubled by the first criterion. You're saying it's--
Well, actually, I'm not done with my previous line of questions.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry, keep going. Sorry.
Does the 72 hours, is that, that's just 72 hours? It's not business days or take any account of holidays or anything?
It's 72 hours is what, is what is in the code, is 72 hours. So if we put a tag on there on Friday, yeah, Saturday and Sunday, our officers are not out there on Saturdays and Sundays. Monday's a holiday, is well past 72 hours before we even respond or get back to it.
But if the property owner happened to be out of town for the holiday weekend, they could have left before the tag was put on and then be back in their car--
That's a possibility, yes.
Okay, so that's a concern to me. I am also concerned about the mayor's concern about expired tags, because that doesn't seem to be, necessarily to be evidence of it being abandoned. And then Jasmine Wosworth, my staff has been working with you, and I really appreciate you answering her questions and mine. The reason cited for the new two-hour requirement rather than 24-hour requirement to get the tow truck out is to cut down on the number of times that they go out where it's gone on arrival, the car has already been removed. To me, that's a good thing. If the property owner has been able to get back to their vehicle and take it and do something with it, our problem is solved. It's no longer littering the public right-of-way. We are looking to, the revenue we're looking to increase is, goes from 50,000 to 165,000. That's really not a significant amount of revenue for P-Bot. We're not looking to pave our streets using towing money. And in fact, the city service fee is only going to increase from 3,100 to 6,000. So that, again, is not a significant amount of money compared with-- So that, again, is not a significant amount of money compared with the hassle for a property owner of having to take time off work to go get their automobile, get it out of the pound, pay the fees. I mean, if you've got, if you're cited for having an out-of-commission vehicle and given 72 hours, it may be a week before payday. It may be not something that you can get AAA or, if you don't have AAA, to get your, to have the money to be able to tow it yourself. That's not very long. So it seems to me that, and when we asked, we were told that in last year, 160 cars disappeared after, after the 72 hours but before the tow truck got out there. To me, that's a good thing. So my question is, why aren't we giving property owners longer? Often, these vehicles have been there for months, if not years. Why don't we give a week or more after you post the green tag? And why don't we mail, mail notice to the property owner by looking at the VIN through the window to be sure that they know that their car's about to be towed?
Many of these vehicles, when we talked about failure to display current registrations, it's not as if the registration expired a week or two. A lot of these are several months old. Majority of these vehicles are, have been expired for some time. It's about maybe two years with expired registrations. And so these are complaint-generated cases that we receive from the public. Neighbor, someone in the neighborhood, see this vehicle, and I saw it many times, and that's the reason why they call us and we go out on it.
Well, so let me pursue that a little further, because we don't have a hard and fast threshold about how far beyond the registration period it has to be before we tow it, right?
Correct.
It is complaint-based. So forgive me for using a personal example, but it's on point. I own a, my wife and I own a 1987 Toyota pickup truck for which we paid $500. It is not a thing of beauty, though most of the time it's operable. Most of the time, it's parked in our driveway. We don't use it very much, because we use it when we're doing a remodeling project on our house to haul stuff. So it sits around a lot and grows green mold, which what cars do when they're parked in Portland under trees. And, you know, the registration on that thing lapsed, and it sat in my driveway for a couple of months without me remembering to get the new stickers on it. But no harm was done because it was in my driveway, where no harm was done to me. But now, you know, my, that's a pretty ugly truck. If I parked it on the street, I wouldn't really blame my neighbors for complaining. So I'm pretty concerned that wrote, that failure to comply with a relatively minor issue of registration of the vehicle, if it's otherwise operable, tires are full, the windows aren't broken out, what's the neighborhood harm other than, you know, I have an ugly truck?
Pardon me for coming up. Ben Walters with the City Attorney's Office. Just as a point of clarification, what constitutes an abandoned vehicle is not defined within the contract. The contract is the implementation of what the council has defined as an abandoned vehicle in code.
I understand that.
So if the council, if the council chose to or is uncomfortable with what constitutes an abandoned vehicle, the council could change that by a code amendment.
Right, I understand that, but, you know, every now and then in this process, we learn something, and I didn't, I didn't know that that was our policy. And this council's using this moment to check out the policy.
Plus, the contract is saying we want you to whip them out of there faster. And that's the piece that I'm concerned of.
That's a different question. But what constitutes an abandoned vehicle, the council has the authority to change that definition should it choose, but it, it's not in front of you as a code amendment today.
So we could, that's, that's an important clarification. Let me give you another example. It's not directly on point, but it illustrates the equity that my two colleagues are raising. I have a friend that was doing some work in his house, and so he got one of those structures that you put in front of your house on the street, and you store your furniture in there. I forget what they're called. They're like pods.
Pods, right, right.
And the vendor that leased him the pod for this project didn't give him clear notice that he had to get a city...
Yeah, permit or something, yes, yeah.
So he filled it with all the stuff, and he went on vacation with his family. And he came back and it was gone. And so the first thing he thought was, oh, my God, it's been stolen, because it had, well, it turned out to have been towed because it didn't have the sticker. And so whatever part of our code says, if you have a pod that isn't properly licensed. And he had gotten a notice, but he was on vacation. So when he, when, it cost him like $500 to recover the pod, which he was duty-bound to do because it was leased, so he had to pay whatever it was. But interestingly, the way the pod is, is towed is, it is, a flatbed truck comes and puts it in an angle and slides it up. So everything in the pod was destroyed. So he, he lost his stuff, he had to pay $500, and he would not fall within any category of someone that, that would be the poster child of what we're trying to get at. This is not someone who was running a business out of his pod. He didn't fail to pay and it just was abandoned. He just didn't know our rules as well as he should, and he, he paid a huge price. I also am troubled by the idea that there's going to be some fairly innocuous behavior. And by the way, if you're stopped in a car with, with your plates not up, you get a ticket. They don't get you out of the car and tow your car, right? So it's still an administrative fine. And Mayor, I wonder, this is, the commissioner in charge is not here.
Right.
And, and yet we have to have a contract to at least enforce the other portions. Can we simply declare a moratorium on enforcement of the piece that we have concerns about and have that come back for a further discussion? Because I know we have to have a, a company enforce the parts we don't have a concern about.
Right, and it sounds like, from what I see here, that the current contractor, contract with Retriever ended on August 31st. Are we on an extension of that old contract with them?
Yeah, so it would expire today. And may I interject one more thing?
Please.
So about Commissioner Fritz, you expressed concerns about the expediting of the tow response by the towor. And there was an actual, a secondary reason for that as well. The reason for that was to cut down on an unscrupulous towor coming in and taking that car before our contracted towers got to it. No, this came up a couple of years ago. And so that cuts down on the possibility of that happening again. And that, so that was actually partially in response to that as well. And again, I believe the city attorney mentioned it, but the contract is completely flexible on, on the abandoned auto process and how long you want to give a person before the, before the call is called into the tow truck. So it, it's completely flexible that way. So if it would change, the contract would still not be affected by that. And the services would just be provided per their policy.
Well, that's good to know, because my, my recommendation, Commissioner Novick's staff is here. My recommendation is that we do go ahead and approve the contract, because policy direction will then change how the contract is used. But we have to have a contractor. And they've gone through a process to select a contractor. So I don't have much of a quarrel with that, but I do have concerns, and I know you do as well, Commissioner Fritz and others here, about are we operating this as a livability program, pure and simple, and exercising both, giving direction about what we do and don't do based on that being the touchstone of this program, as opposed to a revenue program? Or an enforcement program for the, for the motor vehicles division? None of the, none of those.
Mayor, I just had another idea I wanted to share with the two of you since you're leading the discussion. We could say as part of this that we direct the Bureau to give 30 days notice in the event of a, of a, of a registration issue, to give Steve's office a chance to come back to us with potential changes to the code. Since the notice, you're already giving 15 days?
That's after it's towed. That's after it's towed.
Oh, after it's towed, I'm sorry. So, all right, so we could, but we could extend the front-end time for that particular category until we have a package, something to consider at council.
So Commissioner Novick's staff is here. Let me ask one of you to come up, if you would, and give us, what, give us your preference based on this discussion that you've heard in the absence of the commissioner in charge.
The commission's back tomorrow. We could set it over till tomorrow.
Let's hear what you'd like to do.
And actually, I would appreciate if Ben Walters would maybe come up here to back me up on the legal basis. But my understanding is that the tow contract in and of itself, to try to make an amendment pursuant to Commissioner Fish's recommendation, would not fit well within the contract itself, but instead perhaps within our abandoned auto program, which is in city code.
So he's going to be back tomorrow?
Correct.
Why don't we, why don't we set it over for, for action, for continuation tomorrow?
And the current contract expires today.
Yeah, but one is, I mean, obviously, we have to take testimony today, too. One option we could do is on page 15 of the contract to delete the three response time criterion, 3.6, 3.4, and 5. So that's something that we might consider.
Is this contract amendable? Can we amend it? Yeah, again, my, my suggestion would be, we got policy issues here that this discussion has highlighted. Great, I'm happy that that's happened. I think all of us want to bear down on those, those issues with Commissioner Novick sometime very soon.
How long has this code been, the current code been in effect?
I, I believe, I'm not sure the exact time. I've been in park enforcement for 23 years. It was like this when I started.
So what I also would suggest to my colleagues is we take testimony, vote on the contract. We have a long history. This has not been brought to us in other forums. I am perfectly comfortable waiting a week or two for Commissioner Novick's office to come to us with, with any proposed code changes. I think we should do it thoughtfully. I, I don't, I think we can, we can limp along for two weeks, and I am concerned the contract's expiring. And if we got 20-something years of history, at no time in seven years on the council has anyone come at a public part of our meeting and complained about this process. So you've highlighted a concern we all have. I, for one, Mayor, am willing to go a couple of weeks under the, under the status quo.
When, when the contract expired at the end of August, did you come to us to ask to extend it?
No, the, the contract allows for an administrative extension, a temporary extension after the, the last extension. So it's a three-year contract with two consecutive one-year extensions. And then after that, you can administratively extend it out as needed. And it's a temporary thing, that it's meant to be there on a temporary basis.
Keep going on that basis.
So we really...
Well, that's what I'm thinking. We could just temporarily set it over.
So if we do nothing, you could still extend the contract administratively for a little while?
If, yeah. And again, just to be very clear, the contract in and of itself did not, you know, change or affect the immediate policies for living autos.
Yeah.
Well, it does change the response time.
Mayor, can I, can I say something?
Please.
I, I want to say first of all that I am supportive of this, and I, I think there's at least two sides to every issue, as we well know. And we're not hearing from the side of the aggrieved neighbors who, as Commissioner Fritz said herself, these cars sit there oftentimes for a year before any action is taken. And all of us concerned about our climate action plan, well, yes, one of the key ways to enforce a vehicle's compliance with clean air is to have it inspected. That's how you get your tag. So I think, you know, we're being a little too frivolous and cavalier about we shouldn't take an abandoned auto that's been sitting on the street for a year, or we should be tolerant of cars that are dirty, emitting dirty air, just because they don't want to go through DEQ. So I, I support this contract. And if you're going to embark on a major policy process, or if you're even going to set over tomorrow, I won't be here tomorrow, I would suggest you set over the testimony on this issue until tomorrow as well. But I, I really think, I, I do support this contract, and I support the criteria. And if the council wants to undertake a more expansive process, let's make sure we hear from all sides to this issue.
Good suggestion. Okay, let's give us all a chance to process what we've heard. Unless there are any further questions for you, we'll see if there's any testimony on this issue, and then we'll see if we have a, a decision.
Mr. Johnson, Charles Johnson, he's the only one who signed up.
Thank you.
Okay, come on up.
For the record, Charles Johnson. And I have to say that I'm thrilled when you pleasantly surprised me with a very robust and progressive concerns, but I actually somewhat have my sentiments aligned with Commissioner Saltzman, that we've all been through neighborhoods where the neighborhood people behind closed doors have gone through a, are we going to bother this dude about his car that's been sitting there for 300 days? And at the same time, I think that we do need, I, I think you could totally approve this contract the way it is and just get it over with. But you should return to this robust conversation of what's the best way to be Portland? If we have people who might have junky, old crappy cars and financial concerns or mental health concerns, should we have ways to help the neighborhood people engage with those people so they can still use their transportation? Except, of course, it's an abandoned car, so they're not really using it. So maybe they need help liquidating that asset without a tow truck coming and having to go through the procedure. But it was a good and surprising discussion that touched on those issues. And like I said, you could feel okay, I think, about approving this contract as is today and moving on. But we should have this conversation of, we know that there are, and we should maybe from the towing provider and from the Department of Transportation, Bureau of Transportation, get some information on, what are the statistics? Like, is it nine out of 10 cars that are dead on the side of the road that have sat there? Or are we talking about a lot of cars that are in our neighborhoods where, you know, people who, whatever their issues are, whether it's poverty, or they're single people who don't know how to fix cars and, you know, just can't make that connection? But we should be able to do something better than these people, you know, just waking up. Maybe officers of neighborhood involvement should get involved, and these people can actually have, for the ones at home, people can have direct human contact with a city employee who says, in 72 hours, your car will be gone, and we're going to use that money as a revenue source for the city's Bureau of Transportation. Maybe they'll just say, okay, tow it, I can handle that. But I appreciate your, rather more thorough than usual review of this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so it seems to me we have some options here. We can approve the contract and ask Commissioner in Charge to return to us with the policy discussion sometime soon. We can set over the contract and allow, we don't have to do anything, the Bureau has the opportunity to administratively extend the current contract until we approve the contract and/or have a policy discussion.
Here, so let's go down the line here.
We could amend it.
My preference is to vote on the ordinance. We have had no objection to having the substitution. And...
What substitution?
Of one towing company for another.
One towing company for another. And to the, to the policy question, I mean, I appreciate, Dan, your view, but I hardly think it's frivolous to actually ask to see some data and see how, what the impact is. And frankly, if the data said that disproportionately this targets people of color or working-class people or undocumented, I think you'd want to know that. But I don't know the answer. So I don't think the question's frivolous. I think what we've done is said as collectively, we'd like, there's three criteria. Two of them are no brainers. We, we see those cars all the time. The third seems like there's a grayer area. And I think all we've said is, we'd like to get some more information and data to know whether that's the right policy. So I'm prepared to vote for the contract, and I would like the Commissioner in Charge to come back and walk us through how that other prong is being administered. And if there's no problem with it, then so be it. But I don't consider that a frivolous exercise. I think that's part of our oversight exercise.
Dan, your thoughts?
Yeah, I said, approve contract.
Okay. Andy, are you comfortable with that, or?
I can only support approving the contract if we remove 3.6.3, 3.6.4, and 3.6.5 on page 15 of the 91 pages.
Of the contract itself?
Of the contract itself. Those are the ones, as far as I'm seeing, that talk about the response time. Again, in my inquiries after the 72-hour notice, but before the tow truck got there in 2014, 160 cars disappeared. Now, again, second time today, thanks to Maxine Bernstein of the Oregonian, and this time for Jasmine Wadsworth, who pulled up her article from April of 2014. The issue that was alluded to with cars being stolen has been addressed, I'm hoping. And I'd be interested in hearing from the Bureau as to how else we are making sure that the right companies are, the right company is allowed to tow, and that we're, the police are continuing their due diligence on making sure that registrations are checked and notified and titles transferred before we do the crushing. But...
So that means we don't, we don't have a, four votes on an emergency, Mayor. Can I make an alternate suggestion?
Please, I'm looking for one.
I'd be comfortable with the Bureau administratively extending the contract until such time as Commissioner Novick brings this back to council. I think he should be here. And I'm loathe to change a contract since it's negotiated by the parties, and if we start taking something in or adding it, we're the least qualified people to do that. So I'd rather maintain the status quo. I take Commissioner Fritz's concern seriously, but I don't think we should amend the contract on the fly. Let's administratively extend it and come back with a fuller discussion.
I agree with that, because I'm unwilling to invade the language of the contract itself in the council.
In which case, we just set it over till next week.
Okay, so we're going to set this over for a week. Obviously, Commissioner Novick's staff has heard this discussion, and we'll look forward to hearing some direction from them and from the Towing Board of Review, perhaps, when the council returns to the regulatory subject. And maybe they can make a presentation about options there when the contract comes back. So it's continued for one week. Okay, item 1,002.
Sorry, 1,002, adopt regulatory...
Sorry, 1,002, adopt regulations for marijuana license procedures and requirements.
Mr. Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our third hearing on this issue, maybe fourth. I'm losing count. But certainly, there's been plenty of public process. And it is a new program, and so it's highly unlikely that we're going to get absolutely everything right the first time that we vote on it. And we will continue to work on the program. Just to review, beginning tomorrow, medical dispensaries are allowed to sell a certain amount of recreational marijuana through the end of 2015. And then possibly as early as December 1st, recreational marijuana businesses could apply for a city license along with an Oregon Liquor Control Commission license that would be granted no sooner than January 4th of 2015. So the urgent issue that we need to, that I would like us to vote on today is to adopt this emergency ordinance with amendments so that we have some regulation of time, place and manner, starting tomorrow, for how medical dispensaries can sell recreational marijuana. And to, again, recap, the direction from council, based on public input at the last two hearings, is that we should do whatever we can within the scope of our authority to both prevent land grabs and to prevent giving inadvertent upper hand to outer state companies. And also to support medical marijuana patients and dispensaries. This council has been very supportive of medical marijuana every time that we've been asking about it. And so our, the goal of the amendments today, which staff will walk us through, is to make sure that we protect the medical dispensaries to the extent that council has directed. With that, I'll ask Teresa Marketti, the program manager, to please walk us through it.
Thank you so much. I firmly believe that third time's a charm. So I'm Teresa Marketti for the record, and I'm the Livability Programs Manager. And
And I'm Victor Salinas, the Marijuana Policy Coordinator for the City of Portland, for the record. And we'll go ahead and walk you through the beginning of the proposed amendments to Chapter 14B dot 130. So the first amendment is to Section 14B dot 130.080 with the requirements, operational requirements. The second amendment is to Section 14B dot 130 dot 040 dot D. And that's to the distance restrictions for dispensaries and retailers. I'll speak to the latter one that I mentioned, since that is a less complicated one. We've heard from industry and from medical patients alike that the proposed changes to Section 14B dot 130.080A2 are in response to concerns of medical marijuana patient cardholders employed at medical dispensaries within the City of Portland about their ability to medicate at work as necessary for their medical conditions pursuant to OAR 333 dash 008 dash 1200. So the amendment would actually change the proposed ordinance or code to allow them to medicate onsite in closed quarters, in private quarters, away from public view and away from anyone else within the medical dispensary.
And to clarify, we're going to defer to our ongoing process to decide whether that same provision should apply to retail establishments once there are purely retail establishments authorized.
The amendment to Section 14B dot 130 dot 040D, the distance restrictions for dispensaries and retailers. So the amendment that we've crafted is intended to meet council's direction of protecting the existing medical dispensaries that have been supporting the medical marijuana patients. We were asked to develop some criteria for that, and we have done so. And the criteria is related to those dispensaries that have been established in Portland with substantial financial and time investment, and also that are operating in compliance with state regulations and serving medical patients. And I have to say that we had some trepidation about crafting this policy in a way to make sure that we were not unfairly granting some amount of preference to one group over another. We've heard a lot of criticism that the current marijuana industry is predominantly white, male, and affluent. And we have really strived in our policymaking to ensure that we're not systematically and unintentionally excluding groups that don't enjoy the same privileges as others. It is commonly felt that the current medical marijuana industry and marijuana industry has been able to take advantage of opportunities that other groups cannot because of their status and privilege. And I am very aware of how much of a challenge it is to speak about privilege in the realm of policy. I enjoy my own privilege most of the time without even knowing it. And ONE's core value system and also explicit direction from this council has made, it has basically mandated that we actually do think about it within this policymaking. And it's been at the forefront of our minds through this entire thing. So we think that this
Did you say you heard public testimony to that effect?
We did. We did. At the town halls, at the community stakeholder work group meetings. The, we do believe that this criteria helps to ensure that we don't erect barriers, additional barriers to specific groups within Portland. We also think that it maintains, which is also within the framework of viewing this through an equity lens, it maintains and preserves the protection from saturation that City Council has been very adamant about in ensuring for the communities of Portland by establishing the 1,000-foot buffer.
Teresa, I don't know enough, I guess, about the industry, but who is privileged and who is not privileged in the industry?
Well, we are, we're really talking about the fact that, you know, the, that individuals who are well resourced, have existing supply lines, have existing, really, it's about the resources that they bring to the table, that they can take advantage of a very high-risk situation entering into the medical marijuana industry and now into the medical industry to a greater extent than other groups can.
We're talking about people of color and women in particular not having had access to opening those facilities.
I guess, I want to play devil's advocate. If we want to be as laissez-faire and pro-equity as possible, why don't we just not adopt any of these standards about citing? And just allow the market to operate and allow people to enter the market? I mean, I'm really baffled.
No, thank you.
I do think, you know, we're talking about a regulatory program where you want to hire eight people? You know, I questioned that last time. So why don't we just let it lie and not adopt any local regulations?
Because I think the equity lens needs to be applied both on the front end and the back end. So we're talking about the communities that these, that these types of businesses are going to locate in, and providing protections for them, and also establishing those expectations between those communities and this industry, and the newness of this industry is extremely important when we're looking at it from an equity lens. I mean, we have seen time and time again across the nation that alcohol and vice-related type businesses congregate in areas of social disadvantage, and they perpetuate that. And I think that, especially as we are embarking on this new realm, that we need to be mindful of that and the policies that we're proposing to you for your adoption to make sure that we're not making the same mistakes that we've made.
And specifically, this addresses position in terms of the population that lives east of Mall 205, or, I'm sorry, Highway 205, where we see a great saturation of adult businesses from lottery to bars to liquor stores to other forms, other adult industry businesses as well. And that's where we see the greatest impact, where there is the least amount of resources and the knowledge and the ability for people to present themselves here today, to be able to advocate for the regulatory system that addresses livability in those neighborhoods.
You know, I think the fundamental flaw with the lens you're looking at this, in my personal opinion, is, you know, marijuana's not like alcohol. You know, people are not going to be allowed to smoke on premises in either of these establishments unless you're behind closed doors and all locked up. It's not a, you know, it's not a speakeasy. It's not a bar. There's not going to be spillover into the neighborhoods. And people aren't going to locate, if people are entrepreneurial, regardless of their race or gender, they're not going to locate in an area where they're not going to make some money. And so why not, as I said, why, you know, they're not going to saturate an area if they're going to put each other out of business. And like I said, we're looking at marijuana like it's alcohol or pornography, and it's just not the same. And I think the voters took a very clear position on that. And I think we're just kind of, you know, we're regulating for the sake of regulating, as opposed to the sake of there being a real problem.
I understand where you're coming from.
I'd rather, you know, be laissez-fair, and we can always come back and adopt regulations. Nothing, the world is not going to end tomorrow if we don't have regulations in place.
It's always difficult to come back and regulate. It's always difficult to run after a problem once it's already established. We've seen again and again that there are proactive regulations, reasonable regulations, that can be put in place that avoid all of those negative consequences. And even though we don't know to what extent that marijuana may align with alcohol, it's the best system that we have for comparison at this point, just because it hasn't been ethical to study it, to study marijuana and what the impacts are on an aggregate level, just because it was illegal for so long.
So can I just ask a simple question, because today is full of surprises for me? If Commissioner Saltzman has a principled objection to us adopting any regulations, Mayor, I would propose that we just move to take the emergency clause off, take testimony today and have this go to next week.
May I ask you?
If, and then if you have a principled objection to regulation, and it seems to me there's been a robust public process, we've had lots of testimony, we've been working in good faith to craft community standards. I appreciate that in this one area, you don't believe in regulation. So let's take the emergency clause off, take testimony and bring it back next week.
Let me suggest doing it in a little different order. We have some proposed amendments, correct?
Yes.
So I would suggest we take action on the proposed amendments, hear testimony, and then see what the council's sense is of going forward, hear testimony on the amendments.
Yeah. But I'm just previewing that a laissez-fair approach means the entire exercise he disagrees with, and that's his right. But I think we can spend a lot of time going around, debating that. I think we should have a full council to have a vote on it.
I understand that. Okay. Other things you need to get across to us about the amendments before we take a motion on accepting the amendments?
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion that we accept the amendments?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion on accepting the amendments, and then we'll ask if anyone wants to testify on the amendments. Okay, roll call, please.
Saltzman?
Hi.
Fritz?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Hales?
Hi. All right, thank you. So now, I don't know if we have folks signed up for public testimony. Let me see if I can't help make this, at least I hope, simple and fairly brief. And that is, if you think that we've got it right, no need to come up and speak, you know, but we always like affirmation. But if you think we haven't yet got it right, that's particularly what we want to hear. So if you think these amendments have solved the problems that were raised in the earlier hearing or hearings, fine, give us a thumbs up or smile. But if you have, still have concerns, okay, there's at least one. If you still have concerns about where we're headed with the now amended regulations that are in front of us, those are the folks that we particularly need to hear from. So would you call the roll? If we have a, call the list, if we have a list?
Yeah, yes, we do. For the amendments, it's Sam Chapman, so here, Sam Chapman, Donald Morse, and Megan Ulster, is she going? Amy, Amy Markelis, and Jeff Sugar. Is that Jeff who's coming up as well?
Okay, well, let's take the first three anyway, or four, if we can bring up another chair. All right, you can wait. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Hales. Commissioners, my name is Sam Chapman, for the record. We're going to be really brief, because a handful of us have to rush down to Salem for a ceremonial bill signing for all of the marijuana bills with Governor Kate Brown.
Okay.
So while we're going to be brief, this is still a very important issue to us. And I think a good handful of us do not believe that the proposed amendments are acceptable as is. And I think Amy will get into more specifics about exact language that we would like to see, which I will endorse. But very quickly, I'll go through my regular testimony here. I'm very glad to hear that the patient issue got fixed. That was something that's been in statute. There should be no question about that. It's in statute. Patients that are employees can consume on-premise behind closed doors. I don't understand why there's more conversation needed. It doesn't sound like there is. Thank you. Another section that I wanted to refer to was Section 14B 130.080, which bans retail delivery. I understand that maybe there is some hesitancy because it's a new industry, we're not sure what delivery means, et cetera. I can tell you that it is something that the legislature specifically allowed because of the local compromise that happened last session between cities, counties and the industry in allowing counties and cities to ban. It was something that was championed by Senator Floyd Przyanski. And the reasoning why I think the city should reconsider that is because prohibition doesn't work. That's why Measure 91 passed with such high numbers that it did. And creating or continuing to allow a black market of deliveries, which exists now, there's quite a few of them in Portland, they're around the state. It's something that if we do choose to regulate, we should regulate it. We shouldn't prohibit it and encourage the black market to continue to dominate the delivery industry as they do now. And lastly, I'd like to just step back and talk at kind of a 10,000-foot level about the work group and how we've gotten to where we are today. Initially, in these first meetings, it seemed like everything was very clear, very straightforward, that maybe there should just be one license, which is what I would like to advocate for, and I think others as well, one marijuana retail license. I mean, adding dates, adding additional clauses. It seems clear to a lot of us that there's a lot of miscommunication, a lot of misunderstanding about existing law, and also trying to predict what the OLCC is going to do. We can't do that, right? So I think the proposed language, as is right now, harms potential businesses. The way that I read it, and specifically in Section D from 14B 130.040 under minimum standards, that's where all of this time and date language exists. And I would just propose to remove all of it. Or, as Commissioner Saltzman said, put a pause on this, really consider how much additional regulation we need. There's three regulating authorities in the state right now that are going to be overseeing this industry. And I really think we should look at what they are doing and what the city is proposing to do, and see how much overlap there is. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot of overlap, and we could potentially save a decent amount of taxpayer dollars if we went that way.
Since we're about to lose you, and I appreciate your frustration with the process, but since we're actually responding favorably to many of the suggestions you have, I don't mind frustrating you. The, if we make some additional tweaks here, do you want us to adopt the package?
I don't have a problem with you with the correct tweaks, adopting the package. That's correct.
I wanted to know. Thank you.
And I have a follow-up question. Many of the amendments are in response to your concerns and the concerns I've heard from medical dispensaries about proximity. So would you rather have an imperfect package or nothing?
I think this is part of the core of the misunderstanding, because the way that the language is written is not clear what the intention or the result is, and it's very confusing, even in between people in the industry. People in the industry can't get on the same page.
You would be fine with not saying that other outlets have to be 1,000 feet from existing medical dispensaries?
No, I think any marijuana retail outlet should have to be at least 1,000 feet from any other marijuana retail outlet, whether it be medical or recreational.
That's what this package does.
I don't think that's the case.
Okay. Would like to be next.
My name is Donald Morse. I represent the Oregon Cannabis Business Council. Thank you for hearing me. With what Sam, excuse me, just said, we do not believe that the ordinance as written right now would accommodate a 1,000-foot difference between all dispensaries. Two weeks ago, I was here, and there were two proposals made. One was that existing medical dispensaries be given a two-day head start to apply for a retail license. The other was that there would be a 1,000-foot barrier between all dispensaries, be they retail or medical. Mr. Mayor, you asked Teresa at that time whether, which one would be easier to accommodate, and she chose the 1,000-foot barrier. We have not seen that materialize in the paper in the ordinance that has been put forth. It's a pretty straightforward thing without all of these different items and what applies and when and on what date, et cetera. All you have to do is say, there shall be no dispensary of any type within 1,000 feet of another. That's it, period. Solves all the problems. If you don't want to do that, you can go back to the other thing of saying, we have a two-day head start. We're businesses that anticipate ongoing retail and don't want to lose that opportunity because we all know that medical dispensaries are going to cease to exist within a year or two because everybody wants one system. And it's going to, market forces, et cetera, and the laws are going to accommodate the retail as winning out. So medical dispensaries know, if we don't choose this, we're dead on the vine within a year or two. And if there are people competing against us across the street, we're going to lose. Not only that, it's going to increase market saturation, at least for a year or two, while we struggle to survive and the other guys across the street. So you're going to have twice as many dispensaries as you want. So you're going to have twice as many dispensaries as you wanted. So I would ask that you please, you know, enact the 1,000-foot rule for all dispensaries. It's a very clear and concise way. We've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in what we do. We've brought the industry to this point, and we do not deserve to be pushed aside. Thank you.
And I would encourage everybody to testify on the amendment. The amendment says that for medical dispensaries that were active on January 1st, there's a 1,000-foot rule. What?
Between medical dispensaries is...
Between all of them, we already amended, on a previous hearing, we already amended to say that it's 1,000 feet between any.
That's right.
It may be a case of having too many lawyers looking at language that was drafted precisely and tailored.
Today's amendment, we already did exactly what you said, so that's not, that's done. And then what we're doing today is saying it needs to be a business that was in, or a dispensary that was in operation at the beginning of the year, not some out-of-state entity that's coming in, it's not even operating yet, who's pretending to be a medical dispensary but is in fact going to be retail.
And not, on the point that Commissioner Fritz just made, it's a 1,000-foot requirement. The only thing I can, I could imagine that we would be debating is have we defined who is eligible, who this applies to clearly enough? That might be your concern, that we're too restrictive in who gets the benefit of the 1,000-foot rule, that's a pre-existing business. I can understand people raising that because, in fact, we have chosen what you might view as an arbitrary deadline and criteria, but that's different from whether there's a 1,000-foot rule. The 1,000-foot rule could not be clearer. So let's separate, let's separate those two out, if we could, because I think that's where you're headed.
My turn?
Yes, please.
My name is Amy Margolis. I'm an attorney with Emerge Law Group, and I work with the Oregon Cannabis Association. I am going to talk quickly. I think that there are two options, and my feeling is, with all due respect to the statutory drafters, the legislative drafters for this piece, it is terribly drafted, and what you are seeing is us struggling with that language and an understanding of the intention. And again, that's with all due respect to the drafters of this language, I think I've probably worked with them for a long time, and they're excellent attorneys. That being said, I have offered to the commission proposed alternative language that I think is much simpler to achieve one of two potential goals. The first one is to limit saturation by having a 1,000-foot rule between each and every dispensary, regardless of whether they are medical or recreational. And so I have actually, with the help of many people, Mr. Sugarman, Mr. Chapman, other attorneys who could not be here today, some alternative language that simplifies this issue, that strikes additional definition for Q of medical dispensary, and creates a holistic definition of marijuana retailer. I believe the statutory language will clarify the confusion and the confusion that everyone is existing, and then I'd like to talk about Commissioner Saltzman's alternative suggestion, which is getting rid of the 1,000-foot language altogether. The confusion is that the way it reads to many of us, and I understand Commissioner Fritz, that that was not the intention, but the way it reads to many of us, including a number of attorneys who have looked at it, is that there will be a moment in time where a individual applying for a Portland license, recreational license, could push out an existing medical dispensary. Now, I understand that that's not how you read it, Commissioner, but I will tell you that I struggled with the language myself, and I think offering some clarity through the alternative proposed language, if I'm understanding that the intent is not to allow that to happen, here is, excuse any typos, we worked on this for a long time to try and get it right, and there needs to be internal clarification, or, excuse me, internal remedying of some of the language if you accepted this that we're proposing. So I think that's issue one. The second thing that solves it is Commissioner Saltzman's response, which is, let's just get rid of the 1,000-foot rule altogether. I take no position on that, but I do think there's a clearer, more concise way to get to the goal of this commission.
I believe that Commissioner Saltzman is saying, let's not do this at all. Could you clarify, sir?
Yeah, I believe that we should do away with any kind of a 1,000-foot boundary that's going to somehow put other businesses out of business. And I guess, I'm open enough, if there's an absolute need that we have to adopt something today, but I guess philosophically, I'm just concerned about the program we're setting up, and it just seems overly regulatory, overly duplicative. That doesn't mean I haven't voted for things that are overly regulatory and overly duplicative in the past, so if there's a compelling reason to vote on this today, I will go along with it, but I do think your testimony is right on, and, you know, I do think philosophically, my point is, we should just let this market establish itself, and it'll shake itself out.
Thank you, Commissioner, I really appreciate that clarification, and let's all remember, nobody's going to be able to apply for a retail license tomorrow. This is...
The one thing that occurred to me, Commissioner Fritz, is if we have to vote on this today, and we're hearing that there's some questions about whether the language could be clearer about our intent, and potentially even easier to administer, potentially, what I would suggest is, we lock in a room the people that care about that with our attorneys and just resolve it, and that's fine. And I think we have the luxury of adopting this and then having you do that, and if next week there's some clarifying language, we'll take it up as an amendment.
And Commissioners, may I respond to that? One way to do this, to solve that issue and that issue, is to adopt this regulation, but because, as you pointed out, there is no retail license yet, there is no reason to include the portion around the retail component right now. It's much easier to create good legislation than it is to adopt unnecessary and poor legislation and then put us in a room to try and fix it. So just pull that language out that doesn't even apply right now, and then put us together to try and fix it.
There's reasons why I think that's not the best course of action. I've already committed to having the ongoing process. We know we're not done today. There is a compelling need to get the regulations adopted to protect your industry.
Commissioner, may I? I think that what this is creating is an environment of fear and concern in the industry. We work with hundreds, more than hundreds, of clients in this industry, and I cannot tell you how many calls I have fielded from smart people about this particular language. So I'm hoping that even, that the pieces that protect this industry, that's fantastic, support it, the pieces that protect the community and the neighborhoods, support it, we support that. This particular component that sets up a potentially competitive and arbitrary application process between retailers and medical dispensaries, some point in the future does nothing to protect the industry.
When is the earliest that sometime in the future could occur?
So our understanding, and I'm on the licensing and as well as Mr. Morse, the Licensing, Compliance, and Regulatory Committee for the OLCC, and our understanding is that the soonest we will see open recreational dispensaries is sometime in October of 2016.
However, I'd like to add to that, that the application process begins January 4th, and the OLCC has indicated that we must have a lux from the city in order to make application.
By January?
By January 4th.
Have a what from the city?
They are calling it a lux.
Land use compatibility statement.
That exists in this piece of regulation, and it doesn't need to be touched right now. It's a land use issue, and it's not a distinction necessarily, depending on the form you all create.
Just to reiterate what I said at the beginning, it's tomorrow that medical dispensaries are allowed to sell a certain amount of recreational marijuana through the end of 2016, and it's not until December 1st that retail marijuana businesses could apply for a city license. So we have at least two months to continue this discussion and bring amendments back to council if needed.
Okay, that's an option.
Jeff Sugarman, today representing Groundworks Industries. I think the disagreement that we're having with Steph, and I think it's a good faith disagreement, and we know everybody's working hard to come to the right place, is how do you accomplish the transition of medical shops to recreational shops as they move forward, and how do we honor those existing OHA licenses as that process goes forward? The way the ordinance reads today, the new language, the only people who would be protected are those shops who decide to stay as medical shops, who have been operating prior to January 1 of 2015 and had a city business license by June 30. But they cannot have submitted, not even submitted, a recreational application to be able to receive that protection. And that's the gist of what I want to talk about, is why we should honor those existing licenses and help those shops who are transitioning from medical to recreational stay in the locations where they're at today. First of all, it will be a much more orderly transition, similar to what we saw in Colorado when they allowed their medical shops to come in first. These owners of medical shops that I want to switch over have been through the state licensing procedure, and they have proven that they can operate compliantly. Indeed, the legislature has decided that they've done so well, they're going to be allowed to be retail shops starting tomorrow and serve recreational customers. They've followed the rules, they've operated in good faith in building a business, and they've done nothing wrong to have that space taken from them. Now, I really listened carefully to Ms. Marquetti's issue on equity here, and I think that that potentially could be an issue, but for one thing I learned yesterday while meeting with the staff of Commissioner Saltzman, it appears that there was a city study done that, to determine the number of dispensary sites that would be possible in the city of Portland. And what I was told, and I have not seen the studies, that there are 700 potential sites for dispensaries in the city of Portland. Today, there are 132 shops. So if there are that many locations available, there are locations for everyone who wants to come in and enter this recreational market. New people coming into this market should not be allowed to encroach on someone else's space. They need to go out and find one of those hundreds of possible locations, secure it, build out that site, and join the industry just as those who have already done that for the medical marijuana side. Those spaces are available, there is nothing that prevents anybody from going out and finding a location, and I can tell you that's true, because the company I work for has found and secured locations, three different locations in the city of Portland in the last year. There are spaces available. Two years ago, when the OHA first began to license dispensary, there was a significant effort to get in the door first. There were literally programs built so that people could fill in their online applications faster. There were, there was situations where people had no intention of being a part of the industry, received licenses, sometimes by a second or two, and they showed up the next week at the dispensary's door, offering to sell them that license. We don't need that kind of chaos here. Additionally, the timeframe that was chosen in the section which requires you have been operating prior to January 1 and have a city license by January 30, June 30, I think that's also wrong. There are many shops that opened this year, they have leased and bought spaces, they have made improvements to those properties, they have played by all the rules, and they have received valid OHA licenses to begin operations this year, and the way this amendment is written right now, those people would receive no protection even if they wanted to stay a medical marijuana shop. And as we know, 85% of the shops that are out there right now are going to shift over. In fact, I received an email yesterday from the Oregon Health Authority asking, including a survey, a Survey Monkey tool, that is asking medical shop owners, how many of them are going to switch over, because they need to find that information out, too. So I think there's going to be more, more information available soon on this, so...
Thank you, free testimony.
Yeah, so wrap up just...
Yeah, just in summary, one license, we should protect anyone who has a valid OHA license, no matter when they got it. There's plenty of opportunity for other people to, new people to come into the market, there are plenty of spaces available there. I am more than willing to sit down in a room and hammer this out. I think we can get there, but I think that's the crux of the problem, is that those people with existing OHA licenses should be allowed to keep those spaces, whether they stay medical or whether they transition to a recreational facility. And I have heard no public testimony at the hearings from anybody saying, "We should not, we should not allow that protection to occur, and we should require recreational to be a wide-open market again."
Okay, that's helpful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, others that would like to speak?
Next three are Megan Wustner, Jeremy Plum, and Justin Croy.
Morning.
Morning.
Good night.
Would you like to be first?
Okay, hi.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Fritz, Mayor, and other council commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Megan Wallstatter. I am co-owner of Pure Green Dispensary located in the Hollywood neighborhood in northeast Portland. I'm here to offer today to offer testimony regarding the city's proposed regulations. First, I want to say, as someone, amendments, thank you, yes, sorry, as someone who has a background in masters in urban and regional planning, I've actually worked with Commissioner Fritz at Sweeney and Hillsdale Neighborhood Association when I was a board member. Commissioner Saltzman, I worked with you when I was in grad school for local lunches. So as somebody who values the work that you do, I want to say thank you for taking this time to make sure that this gets done right and making sure that we all understand the language that's being implemented. As a business owner, I support the concept of the so-called 1,000-foot rule. I am concerned with the way that it is written right now, without that clarity piece, that someone could come in and apply for a recreational license through the city, and then I, out of a, you know, opportunity of time, I could lose my business license. So if that is something that we're going to clear up with the proposals that were just addressed in the further, the testimony before me, I support that. I think it needs to be clear. It's confusing, as somebody who has a little bit of background in legislative concepts, it's very confusing to read what is, the way it's written right now. So I encourage you to take that time to get that right. I am also concerned that the proposed regulations are unnecessarily complicated, and I want Portlanders to be served by a program that is successful for both the city and the licenses. I believe a single, simple license for both adult-use stores is the most fair and sensible path. Like other, any other business owner, I need certainty in order to thrive. I have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into my store, into my employees, and into our capacity to serve our customers. I am already providing 13 living wage jobs that would be above the city's proposed minimum wage policy that has yet to be adopted. I've worked really hard to ensure the highest level of compliance with the state law, and I would love for the city to value that as much as we do, and I don't want to have to lose my opportunity to continue to be a part of the thriving business culture in Portland. Regarding some of the comments that were said earlier about equity, I am a minority business owner, I own a dispensary, I can sit here and rattle off a number of other dispensaries that are owned by minorities, women and other people of different races, color, all of it, that I could sit here. I'm not going to, but there are plenty of people. The equity issue is not a concern of mine. I feel very confident in being able to get in there. I think there's a lot of people out there that have already done that. I think the focus is that the people that are emerging out of this industry have been living in a black market. We have been the backbone of this industry. The city of Portland has a well-known indoor cultivation system that is a very vibrant part of this local economy, and I believe that we deserve the chance before out-of-state people and keep that local money and keep the people in Portland employed.
Thank you, thanks very much. Good morning.
Good morning. So Commissioner Fritz, Mayor, and the rest of the commission, my name's Jeremy Plum, and I'm a co-owner of Pharma. I'm a licensed dispensary owner over on Southeast 9th and Hawthorne. I'm here today to support the council's effort to implement a fair and transparent licensing structure for Portland's retail cannabis market. In many ways, our dispensary, Pharma, has served as a model for what an Oregon cannabis provider can achieve. We've been toured by the governor's office, Senator Wyden's office, the Multnomah County Health Department, and the OLCC. Our dispensary was recently voted the best in Portland by the readers of the amendment week. We worked tirelessly to create an inspiring, caring, and model facility we're proud to employ. Right now, 15 Portlanders also at a living wage level, above the minimum wage. Yet, the most recent version of Portland's proposed licensing rules could easily put us out of business. That's because even with our achievements, we simply cannot survive without a recreational sales license. Most dispensaries are losing money serving the tiny medical market in Oregon. We will certainly go under if we continue to depend on that limited model. The latest draft rules from the city can give us, can, gave us cause for concern because they would allow a brand-new applicant to obtain a city recreational license and knock us out of the running of that lifeline forever. That would be our death knell. We support the 1,000-foot rule to prevent oversaturation of the market, and we believe that it's in the best interests of the city and its future licensees to develop a single, simple licensing process that provides certainty for businesses like Pharma and the hundreds of other licensed and compliant dispensaries. Over the last two years, Pharma's done our very best to usher in a responsible model for retail cannabis, and at every turn, we've placed compliance over profit. In fact, we were told by our OHA inspector that we had fewer red marks than any other shop, yet, under the proposed rules, we face being eliminated in one moment due to the language of the... language of the city license. For Pharma, our employees, and our community, we ask you to consider the unintended consequences of the current proposal and take whatever time is needed to ensure fair, workable rules for all cannabis retailers. I really appreciate your time and listening. Thank you so much for your attention to this, it means so much to us.
Thanks. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Justin Croy. I'm a co-owner of The Green Remedy on 124th and Powell, a licensed dispensary. And as far as I know minorities owning dispensaries, I can't speak to that, but I can't say that we had nothing when we opened almost three years ago. We, we did our remodel with repurposed wood. So, you know, money being a part of this, of this industry, it only goes so far, we've all kind of worked, whether you had money or you didn't have money, we're all facing the same struggle right now. And that's potentially going out of business. And I think with the 1,000-foot rule, that's something that needs to be addressed, it sounds like you guys are trying to address it, so I'd like to take my time to address something else. And that's the hours of operations. You guys are proposing a 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. We currently have been running 24 hours for almost a year. We have a lot of patients that are swing shift, night shift, and a lot of retail patients are people that are looking forward to coming late at night. I think excluding after 9:00 PM is going to take, not only hurt patients, it's going to make, force us to lay off employees. We currently employ 10 people, we're going to have to lay off at least two. Not to mention, I think it's a higher security risk. Having a, having us shut down last year, someone tried to break in while we were shut down, they put a hole through our wall and entered our building and tried to gain entry to our safe. I know this has happened to at least three or four dispensaries in town while they were closed. Since we've been open, we have yet to have one incident at night. In fact, we've helped the Portland City Police with several cases at night, being that we were there and witnessed things. So that's what I'd like to address. I think it's going to hurt a lot of patients, and I don't really understand the reasoning for it, where I think it's a higher security risk.
So if, let's, let's assume just for the moment that council wasn't going to allow 24-hour operations. What, what, what change would you recommend that would, would, would meet the needs of your customers? What additional change? Midnight? 11?
I would say midnight. Midnight would be a fair thing, it gives a swing shift and graveyard shift as, as they're either going to work or getting off, a chance to come in. I will tell you that just as my personal business, we do 50% of our revenue between 9:00 PM and 1:00 AM, for the whole day.
And that's because you've got people who are coming to see you after a workday or a family day or whatever?
Correct. We have a lot of swing, swing shift people, and we have a lot of people that, like especially some of our military air veterans, that have OCD, that just don't want to go out in public a lot, and they prefer to come in at night when it's less crowded, there's less people on the street.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, how many more do we have signed up, Carl?
We have nine more, signed up.
Okay, my proposal is we power through and try to get this addressed by 12:30, and we have a couple of quick items after that. Okay, let's take the next three, please.
Are Philip Chen, Harvey Cummings, and Andrew DeWes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Afternoon already?
You'd like to go first.
Thank you. My name's Andrew DeWes, I'm an attorney in the cannabis industry. I'm also a board member, vice president and secretary of the Belmont Area Business Association. I also serve on the Judicial Selection Committee of the Multnomah County Bar Association. I'm not here in any of those capacities or representing any particular client. I, I'm here as a community member and someone who has experienced the marijuana industry as both a, a friend of folks in it and someone who serves the marijuana industry. I'm very worried about these proposed amendments' effect on the people who have been in this industry and operating dispensaries lawfully since the beginning of the program. Earlier this morning, we had a, a presentation involving the art in the atrium. Tall trees take the most wind. That's particularly appropriate for these folks. They have been the tall trees since the legalization of medical cannabis in this state. They have weathered these winds, they've weathered IRS, DIRE taxes, the 280E, the inability to take normal business deductions. These are the people that need our protection and they need your protection, and they need a well-thought-out system of ordinances that protect them and don't allow people to come in, and just because they applied a couple seconds earlier are able to completely wipe out a business. So that's what I have to say. I hope you'll take that into account. And I endorse this alternative language that Ms. Margolis gave you earlier.
And again, we haven't decided what the process for getting the licenses is. A rock concert aficionado, I'm in favor of having a lineup. You know, you can't pad overnight.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, good, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Philip Chen, and I'm the owner of Puddle Town Organics located in southeast Portland at 82nd and Powell. Puddle Town is a medical licensed dispensary that has been open since June of 2014, and we're ready to begin sales for the recreational market tomorrow. My wife and I have lived in Portland since 2007 and attended Portland State University. We are expecting our first child in December. Like many here today, I live in the community and have personally taken on debt and sacrificed a career in another profession to open this location. We would like the security of knowing that our business will not be lost because I could not submit an application for retail license faster than the next person who currently may not even reside in this city or state. I have 11 employees who work at my shop, eight of them have been with me for over a year, 10 of them are full-time. We have hired another four employees for the coming transition into recreational sales. These are jobs that already exist. To me, it is unacceptable for them to be put at risk of losing their employment. It is not fair that the city of Portland would put me in a position where I have to gamble with other people's lives, yet that is exactly what the current draft amendments propose. If the city of Portland adopts a first-come, first-served policy for recreational permits, then consider the fact that those of us who will temporarily be selling recreational marijuana over the next year are here first, and that it is our medical license which allows us to sell the recreational marijuana. In this next year, our customers and neighbors will adjust to the changes that the recreational market brings. It would be unfair to make them have to adjust again. The city should absolutely promote new business, but it should also promote stability. The city of Portland needs to support people who are already employed, invested, and contributing, rather than opening it to a game of chance and loss. Those who do not have a medical license will not be required to take any risk other than the application fee. Meanwhile, I would risk not just my application fee, but the entirety of my medical dispensary as well. Essentially, the way the rules are written, there is everything for medical dispensaries to lose and all for the speculative late-entry interest to gain. As saturated with pot businesses as the city may already seem, there are still hundreds of potential locations for new interest to enter the game, but don't let them take away something that we already have. From a logical point of view, it does not make sense for the city of Portland to allow medical dispensaries to risk a loss at the hands of timing or speculation. Please don't put us in a position where we are forced to gamble away everything against someone who is only risking the application fee. Let us keep our medical licenses should we not be able to get our recreational licenses. Let's make a rule that allows for more businesses but does not create the risk of loss. Please consider that there are no precedent situations, the wobbles over, where businesses had to forfeit their current license in order just to apply for a different one, especially within the same industry.
Thank you, thanks very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here, Mayor Hales, and the rest of you commissioners. I'm Harvey Cummings for the record, and I'm the owner of Oregon Whiterie over on Northwest 23rd Avenue. I'll be brief because it seems like we've touched on this pretty well, but it seems as though these regulations, the way they're written, and I've spent a lot of time in code, read them last night and this morning, they're, for me in the industry, understanding where OLCC, OHA, and what you're proposing here, it was confusing. And I think that's what's got our industry in a little bit of fear here, whether it's correct fear or not, we don't know, due to the confusion of the language. So the fears that, that I'm seeing in here are, of course, 1,000-foot, and it sounds like you're addressing that so that we don't end up with a recreational within 1,000 feet. The other part in there that was real scary was the giving up our license on the medical side prior to having our foot in the door on the recreational side, that's scary. And then the oversaturation problem that could possibly be there, we don't know our supply and demand yet, so we don't know if we're saturated or not, but it looks like we have a good infrastructure to work off of for recreational. The problem with oversaturation that I'm seeing is the businesses will struggle. And in a really regulated industry like this, we need staffing to deal with the regu, extra-regulatory efforts within our shops to be compliant. And if we, if we're oversaturated, we're not going to have the money to pay living wages, we're going to be understaffed, and it's going to be kind of a problem for all the agencies to, to manage. So those are my concerns, and I would suggest, personally, there's simpler language that was suggested earlier, that simply neither dispensary could be in 1,000, and that would eliminate a lot of these problems at this point. And I think I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The next three are Alex, Alex Povich, Jeff Geiger, and Charles Johnson.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Hales and commissioners. Thanks again for allowing me this time to speak before you, and I just want to let you know that my passion and emotions rung strong when faced with what I believe is a human injustice from the government's overregulation and taxation of our industry. Once again, my name's Alex Povich, I'm owner of Collective Awakenings Dispensary in the Northeast. I feel this decision you're about to make is a serious injustice to our industry, but don't get me wrong, I do believe we need this ordinance, I do believe we need regulation for our industry, I do believe that we need an Office of Neighborhood Involvement to help oversight what we're doing. But we also need to allow this industry to come out of the closet, so to say, we need to allow some of these businesses to lead by positive example and be able to survive and prosper in the process without being restricted by heavy regulations and ridiculous fees. I, I want to address more of the elephant in the room on this bill that you're proposing, that, that our industry is already riddled with hurdles making it extremely difficult to function as a normal business. We have no ability to have bank accounts, we can't, we have to navigate difficult state and federal tax laws currently. And not to forget to mention, we have a furious, a serious public scrutiny of what we're trying to do. Overall, this isn't what keeps me up at night, though, it's, it's the injustice of these exuberant and preposterous regulations and fees that are being added by the very people that are supposed to be helping us survive as a business in this city. No other business in this city, or in the state for that matter, is required to pay these extraordinary fees. In fact, compared to other 21-plus-style businesses, these listed fees are over 10 times higher than any other business. For example, a city liquor license is $100 from the city compared to the proposed $1,225 that you're suggesting. Plus, you've added an annual renewal fee of $4,175. I mean, now we're talking 20 to 30 times higher than any other business in the city. I just don't feel this is right, and it's not fair to us as an emerging industry. I, I don't know any business that would be able to survive with in excess of $10,000 in business and licensing fees between the city and the state. I hope you're not just trying to set up an industry for failure. I do think that marijuana is not going to go away. This type of overtaxation based on fear is unknown, with ultimately only leading to a proliferated black market, and it'll, it'll cause more citizens to feel like they're being pillaged by their government. I, I feel that this is an exploitation to our, our industry, and I further want to say that, you know, letting us coexist, from what everyone's saying here, is that it's going to be very difficult for medical dispensaries to change into this legalization, and not allowing a coexistence in sales and, and having a single sales license is going to make it very difficult for many of us to accomplish that. Separation will only cause more saturation of the market and create business owners to maybe go look for a second location so that they can sell both recreationally and medically. In conclusion, I request that the current suggested fee structure in this ordinance be reduced by at least half, which will still be over five times higher than any other Portland business. I further request that you rethink coexistence and possibly be ready to match state guidelines, possibly outlining the industry in such a manner. I also hope that you impose a single retail license for the city so that we can continue doing what we're doing as these changes emerge over the coming year.
Your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks a lot. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Jeff Geiger with JGpolitics.com, and as a libertarian, I believe in laissez-faire. I ultimately think that, ultimately shouldn't be voted on, be primarily because I looked at it last night, on the security surveillance, which would be under 14B dot 130 dot 08?
We're just testifying on the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Just on the changes.
Well, then, I would suggest with everybody else, I don't think, I think Dan Saltzman's right in not voting for this, I don't think we should regulate this industry, primarily especially with the fee schedule being $4,175 for a retail license. That is just going, if you overregulate the industry...
That's not amendment either.
It's not amendment either, well...
We're trying to focus on the changes because we've had a lot of hearings on this, so we, we take your point, though, about regulation in general.
Yeah, I agree with Dan Saltzman.
Okay, thank you. Charles, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. I think that, you know, obviously there are huge concerns still remaining beyond the bounds of the amendment. In the paperwork, it talks particularly about not being preferential, yet when we have the invited testimony, we look at the, applying the equity lens to this. And it's ironic that so much criminality and occupation of Oregon state prisons came from communities of color, and we're not seeing any of that here in the talk about marijuana entrepreneurship. And it is questioned whether Dan Saltzman has a point, that the only way for non-white minority entrepreneurs to make entry to this industry is if we throw out regulations that some people are being preferential. But if we are going to have regulation, I think the other thing we need to look at is, is there anything in these amendments that talks about local ownership?
That's already in the original ordinance.
So, appreciate that, thank you Commissioner Fritz, because obviously we have a bunch of successful entrepreneurs, an amazing number of female entrepreneurs here who have success, and we want to perpetuate that, while at the same time letting people who have a historical connection to the illegal marijuana industry transition into success as legal entrepreneurs. So I hope you will stay in vigorous dialogue, particularly with that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
The last three who signed up were Lindsay Reinhardt, Jesse Horton, and Brad Zussman.
Okay, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Again, let us know if you think we got it right on the amendments or not.
Mayor Hales, commissioners, I just want to say thank you for the beginning of this, for adjusting the onsite consumption by an employee in an enclosed room, that will greatly affect my workday, so thank you. I also wanted to adjust the grandfathering language. I would suggest that the date be moved to October 1st as opposed to January 1st, just to encompass all of the investments that have been made in the last 10 months. I'd like to know when the dispensaries are supposed to apply for their licenses? I've heard not dates from, you know, the ONI on, you know, October 1st, November 1st, but applying and the effective date specifically in regard to 12:00 AM sales on October 1st, a lot of dispensaries are trying to go ahead and serve that, that first bud at 12:00 AM. And so we would just like clarification if we're allowed to, because it's a pretty celebratory day. We've heard that it would be overlooked, but maybe not, and most of the dispensary owners that I've spoken with are not looking to agitate the city, and so they're just looking for a little clarification there. One ques, one thing I wanted to touch on was the delivery. Przezanski, no?
Yeah, that's a subject we can come back to, but it's not in the amendments that are in front of us.
Okay. On the 1,000-foot rule, I am one of those people that thinks that free enterprise should be allowed. If your store is ranked number one or even down to number 10, I feel that we should welcome competition. I also know dispensary owners that have buildings with side-by-side locations that would like to have the rec store next to the medical store. And I'm, I'm just wondering if Commissioner Saltzman is, is right on, on delaying this until after the OLCC is done putting out regulations, because I think that it would help clarify the language that you're trying to come up with. Again, I'd like to specify that we're not lottery and we're not alcohol, and there are land use studies available about cannabis in the communities out of Colorado and Sacramento, California, that I think that would be very valuable to this council. And one license would probably simplify the language a lot, because I have heard through a lot of people that OLCC is going to be allowing dual licensing. So I think just that one marijuana business, let a weed store be a weed store kind of thing is applying here, and I think it would help simplify the language. And that's all I have to say today. And that's all I have to say today.
Thank you very much.
And we'll have staff come back and clarify their rules. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Brad Zussman. I am the co-owner with my wife of Canada D's Wellness Center on 169th and Division. I'm here to talk about two different items. One is the thousand-foot rule. In my existing dispensary, I've put about $180,000 in it. In my new dispensary that I'm building across the street, I will have over $600,000 in it after I do all the city improvements for new sidewalks and doing everything there. My concern right now is that I was doing this in the intentions that medicinal was going to be in one building and recreational was going to be an additional building. I'm willing to take the loss of one of my dispensaries of $180,000, but the new one that I'm building right now will not be complete for about four more months. My concern right now here is that if someone came in and I left my lease in my other building and moved over to my new building, then they hit me and they hit me by about two seconds on the application. Does that mean that I lose $600,000 that I built out in my other location? Also, the other thing that I really want to discuss about is my team members that I have. When we first started in 2014, we had three team members. In my cannabis businesses right now, I have 52 that I built up in 18 months. That's 52 families that would be out on the street based on some of the amendments that are out right now. And I've worked real hard with my family and my team to get to this level and I feel that we owe it to my team members and the community to be able to run our businesses and let the saturation field its way out. I've learned in business here that there are successful dispensaries and there are dispensaries that have just been hanging on for recreational. Those will most likely, some will succeed, some will fail. I think that's going to be based on the operator itself. I also have a restaurant that's located in the 200 Market Building that I've been there for 18 years and I have 12 employees there. My employees in my dispensary make an average of $3 to $5 more an hour than people that I've been working with me for 18 years. So there is definitely a better cost of living for cannabis and I think that needs to be taken into accountability.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hello, Commissioners, Mayor Hales. Thank you very much for hearing me. My name is Jesse Horton. I'm co-owner of Panacea Licensed Dispensary in Portland, Oregon, Sandy Boulevard. I'm also owner of Panacea Valley Gardens, which is a cultivation facility here in Portland, Oregon. Also, I come to you representing the organization that I co-founded called the Minority Cannabis Business Association. That's focused on bringing more women and minorities into the industry via economic empowerment, social justice, and patient awareness, consumer awareness causes. I just want to come to you today and, you know, kind of just impress on these amendments that I do support the intention of the amendment. However, I think maybe the language could be cleaned up as a number of lawyers have mentioned today. I think we have a unique opportunity within this industry to start not just a new industry, but a better industry. This industry can do amazing things for uplift, of course, for people, but also for social justice causes and we can't, you know, forget about that. However, it also does have to make sense from an economic standpoint. For years and years, minorities have been negatively impacted and specifically targeted as a regard to the war on drugs. This has had a greatly, a great detrimental impact in minorities' ability to get into this industry. Of course, when we look at things like lack of capital, that's something that I think someone else mentioned, a lot of people are in the same boat. We look at things like legal issues, of course, people being excluded because of certain felonies or things like that, which I think makes a difference as well. But I think far more great an impact that the war of drugs has had, or the war on drugs has had on the community, has been a psychological impact in that we have a lot less faith in law enforcement, a lot less faith in government to treat us equally. And I think that there's a lot of statistics, a lot of things that back that up specifically, a number of studies that shows exactly what I'm saying. And I think what you're seeing now within the cannabis industry is you're seeing minorities, people of color, and even some women. I think Oregon has done an excellent job as regards to, to women. However, you're seeing them say, hey, I'm going to sit back and wait. You know, I'm, I know that if I get into this industry, I'm most likely going to be the one who gets targeted first. I'm most likely going to be treated unfairly because we're in an industry that is so affected by legal issues. And we all know federally, we're all doing something that's illegal and that plays a large, a large impact on the effect minorities who want and have the ability to get into it. And I think in regards to this thousand-foot barrier, I would, I would like to speak to the gentleman earlier that said there's 700 dispensary locations in Oregon. I think that's absolutely ridiculous. I spent a year of my time going around to, to locations trying to find a dispensary, dealing with these thousand-foot barriers, finding one that was open, but it was 995 feet away from another. And that greatly impacted my ability. I had to find different ways to get into the industry and ultimately I was able to find partners who were able to accept me into this, into their dispensary. However, I just want to specifically speak on, we have to do whatever we can to open up more opportunity for minorities to get into this industry. And I think that the, the amendment that has been presented earlier does that. I think the grandfathering clause not only opens up the ability for other women and minority entrepreneurs to get into the industry and uplift the industry, but it also prevents the land grab, which I, I've heard a number of times and I've seen a lot of people. I've spent a lot of times in a lot of different conferences nationwide, people who want to get in Oregon, they're dying to get in Oregon, and people who have spent so much money just to be in that specific position. And not only is it hurting minorities and women, but it's also hurting Oregonians as a whole. So I would also, I think, agree with Commissioner Saltzman in that the thousand-foot barrier is going to help with the saturation in a sense, but in, in another sense, it's going to hurt with the ability to uplift the market and bring in new entrepreneurs that are going to take it to a new level. And it's also going to hurt the ability for minority and women entrepreneurs to get in and make, and make a bigger impact.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay, did we get everyone who wanted to speak up here? So let's bring staff back up, please. For questions and guidance.
There was the specific question about dispensaries who are hoping to sell at midnight tonight. Is that allowed?
Right. So, and my guidance to, to medical dispensaries that have called us with that, as it is, as it is currently within our regulations, even if they were adopted today, they're not technically licensees at this point. However, those regulations have been developed, as you have heard, through a pretty robust public process that involved industry, that involved community members. Those were the established thresholds and expectations of our city. And, and so my recommendation to them has been to, to be true to the spirit of that process and to the integration of their industry into Portland communities. Where, I mean, these regulations are, and, and as of October 1st, are meant to be informative, not punitive. When we do have to use enforcement to get people into line, once the system is up and running completely and we know what that system is going to look like with your direction, then we will, we will be able to, to more target our enforcement. But we're hoping that at this point, the process that we've, that we've engaged in will lead the industry to behave responsibly.
Alex, any other questions for staff?
I have a question. The gentleman who testified that the seven to nine hours of operation would significantly cut into his business because of his customers' preferences, can you just remind us again how we settled on seven to nine and what your thinking, what, what your reaction is to maybe moving it from seven to midnight? What are the pluses and minuses?
So there are some, there are some concerns with, with later evening hours, a couple of different ones. One is that it does, restricting access is a well-known strategy within the social sciences to restrict access to our more vulnerable populations like youth. And the idea that they will be more likely to shoulder tap at times, especially times of the day when there are less people on the, on the ground looking. The other major concern is the spontaneous purchases, which leads to DUI. And that's a major concern for us, especially as we don't know what exactly the, the interaction between alcohol and marijuana may be and people are more likely to have consumed alcohol later into the evening. The percentage of people driving under the influence of alcohol goes up as, as it gets later into the day. And so that's, that was designed to, and also liquor stores, hours of operation are also designed to reduce the, the potential for spontaneous purchases late, late at night when, when people maybe have already consumed other substances. The other portion of that, too, is livability of neighborhoods. We've heard a lot from, from Washington and Colorado that these locations are destination spots, meaning people come from all over, they park, there's trash, there's noise. So landing on the nine o'clock hour was designed to sort of give neighbors some respite from that.
And in addition to that, we did hear from, at the town hall that we had at the Rosewood Neighborhood Initiative, there were a lot of concerns from parents and, and youth in terms of the access to youth and how that impacts families in terms of these dispensaries or potential retailers, how that would actually play in the community and what that does and it brings undesired impacts in terms of the safety and the livability of the neighborhoods.
I'm just reminded, though, that the same, the same logic might apply to a bar and you can go to a bar up to two in the morning and that's, it might be a spontaneous act as well. So I am concerned, since equity has been framed as a major consideration, I guess we should be concerned about whether there's an equity argument that expanding the hours gives people that are working long shifts or have family considerations a chance to get their medical needs met because the, because nine to five doesn't work for them. I don't know how that breaks as an equity matter, but it's been, it's been framed as an issue.
I'd certainly be willing to consider that in the ongoing process, that, you know, potentially when we do have two clear ways of going, that we could have different rules for medical dispensaries, just like their 24-hour pharmacies, but the bars close at a certain time. That's certainly something that we could look at. For right now, we did, as Victor said, we heard a lot of concern from community members. We've heard a lot today and at previous hearings from industry representatives. At the community meetings, we heard a lot more from neighbors who were wanting to be proactive about preventing some of the issues that we currently have with alcohol use in neighborhoods and with bars that are loud and noisy till two o'clock in the morning.
So I guess if I'm, if I'm going to support something today, I guess I need the amendment and the alternative language that was proposed by Amy Margulies on the citing, that we just, we don't draw distinction between medical and retail, we just say a thousand feet. So that's what I need.
Walk us through the difference between the two.
Also, let's, let's bring Ben up.
I thought we were already there.
I thought we were, too.
No, that's not what we're.
So Ben Walters with the City Attorney's Office. As I understand the proposed amendment that was submitted by industry today, and this is the first time I've had an opportunity to look at it, they are proposing to amend the definition of what would be licensed and collapse it down to a single type of, a single entity covering both the licenses granted by the OHA and by the OLCC. And as drafted, because they are two, at the state level, two different regulatory schemes, we had drafted our regulations to be consistent with and parallel to the state scheme. So this would be a departure from trying to follow the state scheme in terms of the two parallel regulatory programs. There may be a time when the state decides that they will collapse them down to one and at that time we could track that and come back in and say, we're going to emulate what the state is doing. Besides which, they, they then say that you would strike the definition of medical dispensary and replace it throughout the ordinance with marijuana retailers. Again, I did not get a chance to see this before. I would have to go through the entire ordinance and think through what the implications would be in that regard. And then they go through the minimum standards and modify those as well. So that would be the implications. My recommendation as legal counsel to the council would be that we, for now at least, track the state system of having two types of licensees and following the state until such time as the state says we're going in a different direction.
Well, I mean, we always take pride in Portland sort of nudging the state to do things. So, you know, paid sick leave or minimum wage. So there's a short session coming up. You know, I'm, I'm a betting person and I, and I bet the state is going to revisit this whole scheme of having OHA versus OLCC and maybe we help take them there.
Well, that's up to council. That's a political choice for the council to make, but for now at least, the, the program that we're setting up tracks with the state system that's in place and is anticipated, and is anticipated to be in place for the foreseeable future.
This fundamentally changes the whole ordinance. We can't just make this change and not look at the rest of it.
So Mayor, I.
Can I make a suggestion?
If you want to set this over and try to get it right, and I'm not saying you did it wrong, but I'm just saying, respond to some of the concerns we've heard today, which I think are legitimate concerns. I'm willing to take more time on this.
So I think that, I think that the, the primary concern that I have heard, and correct me if, if you've heard something different, is that existing medical dispensaries will not be able to wholesale stake out their claim in Portland for their thousand-foot if they choose to go recreational at some point. So we did prepare a few scenarios for council to take a look at what this looks like on the ground and if you're interested in those, we can show those.
Yes, I'd like you to show what we prepared.
Absolutely. So I'm going to switch. So the other, the other thing is that if what we're concerned about is.
Not circling.
I'm not talking about super fun today.
Super fun.
If, if what we're concerned about is the recreational versus medical, allowing opportunity within recreational while maintaining the medical, the original proposal from staff that, that indicated that it would be a thousand-foot buffer between, between medical dispensaries and a thousand-foot buffer between retail locations, that does get at some of those concerns while still maintaining protection for a lot of the communities when it comes to saturation, far better than we have been able to with liquor licensed establishments. And if that is something that city council would want to entertain, given new testimony, I know that some of the same people that were, that were testifying today about the concern about not having a grace period were the ones that also, that also testified for, for the thousand-foot cross buffer. But, you know, there's, there were also the same individuals who were testifying to keep the state systems completely different in Salem as well. And the state legislature chose to follow that and maintain the medical system in its own silo at the same time that they're trying to figure out how OLCC is going to regulate recreational marijuana. And I think that the fact that the state legislature kept those solely different from one another is something to consider as we're moving forward and we're thinking about what the potential philosophies were behind that. I mean, the, the medical dispensaries serve the medical patients of Oregon. The recreational community is going to serve the recreational patients, or recreational users of Oregon. It's completely different population of individuals that are going to be served. And I know because it's the same substance, it gets difficult to parcel them out, but the landscape of those two businesses may look very different. We won't know. And also, just for your information, both in Washington and Colorado did not see any kind of attrition on their medical marijuana dispensaries. They're all going very strong, so.
Patrice, walk us through the PowerPoint, please.
Mayor, you had said 12:30.
Yeah, I was hoping we would be done.
At 12:40, I'm, I'm leaving. And so just whatever you want to, however you want to handle this.
Okay, so never mind on that. I can't. The, the proposed amendment would fundamentally change the whole of the ordinance. So that's, that's not going to work for us to adopt that today.
So can I just, can I suggest there's, I've heard three options. Let me just put them on the table for discussion. One is that we adopt what's in front of us with a binding commitment that changes will come back to us in a time certain viewed by council, reviewed by city attorney. And I mean, a binding commitment because it's where we're headed, as has been pointed out, we're, we're legislating ahead of the curve. The other is to remove the language that, that has caused some controversy and essentially create a void and adopt an incomplete regulatory scheme. And the third is to adopt an amendment that none of us here know what its impact is, other than it may or may not be an improvement. And I have to say, I like the instinct to improve the language, but we're trying to bring this home and I, I would hate to have another unintended consequence. And if our attorney says he's not sure what this means. And if our attorney says he's not sure what this means, then I don't know what it means. And so I'm loath to do something. So for me, it comes down to do either we take it out and come back and put something in that's been cooked, or do we adopt what we have with a binding commitment that someone's going to lock the door with everyone that has a concern, scrub the language and come back to us in whatever. And I, I will follow the lead of my colleagues on that.
That's my preference, but if, since this is an emergency ordinance, we'd need Commissioner Saltzman, I think.
But I would want to have a binding commitment, it comes back with a, you know, within three or four weeks, because that's ahead of the curve, with everybody who's here, particularly the lawyers that have the wordsmithing, invited to a meeting where we, we close the door and we work through until everyone's been heard.
Dan, can you live with that?
Can we do it without adopting something today? How about just the binding commitment, we give you three or four weeks?
Then we don't have any regulations as of midnight.
Yeah, I, I think there's a reason to act today and to maintain our city's ability to be a regulator. How, what kind of regulator we are, how much regulation we're going to apply, what the cost is, details like ours, obviously you're hearing this council's still interested in bearing down on those. And Dan, it may go more in the direction that you want, more, more liberal in its allowance for what businesses might choose or choose to do. But for us to assert our right to regulate, I think is pretty important, and I think that's why I'd like to act today.
Charlie, would you remind me of the rules of emergency? If we had a quorum of three, can three pass an emergency? Do we need the fourth?
Four have to pass an emergency.
So we have to have the fourth, and it looks like there's three of us who've been told we have to have something in place.
And Commissioner Novick is in the air, so that's going to help.
And there are three of us who'd like to put it in place with a binding commitment that the final set of changes, if any, come back to us in three or four weeks. And that's the, that's the approach I would, I would urge our colleagues.
So if we were able to, Commissioner Saltzman, set a time certain date for that, would you be willing to vote to adopt these regulations with an understanding that that's in effect an interim set of rules?
And, yeah, what's the binding commitment? Who's being committed to, to what?
We're going to schedule-
I believe the-
Don't commit me.
Yes. I believe the sense of the council is that you're directing staff, who obviously, to the extent that you're directing us to do so, it is a binding commitment from staff to respond back within a timeframe, and I haven't heard a timeframe identified yet. I do unfortunately have a couple of other council-identified priorities that are in place and that I'm missing because of this discussion, but-
About four weeks.
Four weeks would be ample amount of time.
And the commitment would be-
Teresa, is that okay for you?
The commitment would be that there would be a meeting or two scheduled so that anybody that has specific language concerns can come in, meet with staff and council, review it with the understanding that this council does not want to have another hearing like this. And that whatever you come back to us on is the language that you can faithfully say to us has been scrubbed, doesn't mean there won't be a critic or two. But we won't have anyone saying, I don't understand the language, or haven't had a chance to test my language, and then we'll, we'll either make the change or not.
So the best of our ability and also recognizing that there will be others who will be involved in that conversation who have the other point of view.
I agree.
Right, I understand.
But there's a difference, because I don't mind the difference of opinion, I don't like arguing about abstractions. It's, you know.
It's highly unlikely we're going to be able to get to consensus, given the, the changes, but yes, we will strive to do so.
I think clarity is the goal, not necessarily consensus.
Can we also send council members and, and your staff the scenarios that we worked up for you?
Yes, I'd like to go through that, but I think this is probably not the time and place. So Dan, I would, I would propose that we do act on this today, but your vote is your own. If we do approve it today, I'll set a time certain date of the 28th.
That's a pretty full schedule.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm less concerned about whether it's four weeks or five weeks. I mean, the fundamental dynamic is what I'm concerned about, and that dynamic is that, I mean, this amendment was raised at the first hearing we had three weeks ago. And I don't, you know, there doesn't seem like there's been any giving on this issue. I mean, we heard about it at our first hearing.
Actually, that's-
And so if you come back in four or five weeks, and you don't need my vote anymore, and, you know, you're going to hear disproportionately, I think, from people who are, you know, lost the battle. They lost the battle about legalizing marijuana. It was approved by voters. You have people out there who still want to wish this away. And so I, I feel my power is diluted. It's, it's pretty good today because I can vote no and it'll govern. But you bring something back in four or five weeks, and it's going to be more just justifying your positions, I fear. And we're going to have the same testimony from people who are out there dealing with this in the real world, hoping to make a living, hoping to, you know, respond to the law that was approved by voters.
Fair enough. If we took the emergency clause off, you're telling us that we wouldn't have a regulatory framework in place?
No.
Not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow? In which case, what would happen?
No.
Unclear.
I don't like unclear.
I mean, there's, first off, Commissioner, just, as I heard Amy Margolis describe these amendments, this is something that they were working on through last night up and through this morning. So I don't know that, how this could have been something that was submitted previously. I know that there were other amendments that were submitted. I don't know that these were the same.
I'm not sure she submitted language, but I know she, she flagged this issue at our first hearing.
And we, she flagged the issue of the thousand-foot between the dispenser and retailer, which we addressed in the, in the 23rd hearing, and actually council adopted that, that amendment. This is something that is different.
And, and Dan, in fairness, you don't really have the leverage, because when we come back to review the amendments, we can strip it out again. So we're, we're really talking about either, either if we fail to get to four right now, we won't have any regs in place. So we, that, we have to do that clear-eyed. Or effectively what we're saying, let's do a four-week period. It's almost like there's a sunset, but the agreement will come back and review the, review the language, and you will have a full opportunity to, to participate in that.
Yeah, and I guess-
Or we take the emergency clause off, we vote on it next week, we have a week of free-for-all, and we have the regulations in effect in 30 days. So it's in effect a 30-day free-for-all.
That would be the fallback that I would prefer, but Dan, I guess, let me reassure you as well, I, I think we've got a council here that actually doesn't have any Luddite leanings towards, you know, the, the days before this state initiative was passed. We understand this is the law, we're trying to make it work. We've got, we've made some progress in these hearings about how do we make this work for the existing businesses. Maybe not enough progress yet, but we've made some progress about the employees being able to utilize medical marijuana on the premises. We fixed, we think we fixed that. We're getting closer to at least what I had in mind with the thousand-foot perimeter and the ability to protect existing businesses that are already here and are local. I don't think we're there yet, but we're getting closer. And so we're, we're talking about practical implementation issues rather than a philosophical divide over whether marijuana should have been legalized or not. We have some conflicting fears of business owners who aren't sure that we mean it in terms of where we're coming from on these regulations. I hope you've been reassured in these discussions. Or that, that it will be clumsy and there'll be inadvertent, unintended consequences that will screw up their businesses. I understand that fear, government's not always adroit. And then we have fears in neighborhoods about how disruptive these businesses are going to be. We're going to learn as we go along, obviously, on all those fronts. I want us to assert our ability to be a local regulator. And then, over time, tune those regulations to get to the, I believe, pretty high level of agreement we have about how it should work. You should reg, you should legislate your fears, legislate your hopes, not your fears. You have to listen to your fears and try to deal with them, but legislate for the condition that we want. And I think there's a fairly high level of agreement, a lot of people of goodwill in this room, about what we want. Now, I asked our city attorney this earlier, I'm partially reassured by his answer, but we have been in situations where the city lost out on its ability to be an effective regulator because of conflict with state agencies. And so I'm trying to lean towards regulation, not because I want us to be a really tough regulator here, because I don't want to be back in the position that we've been in with the lottery and the OLCC. And anybody who's dealt with those issues, you have too, know how vexing that's been to our neighborhoods. So I'm trying to be, my, my strategy here is to be a little more of a regulator for now and make sure that we tune it and get it right. I don't think that's going to be that hard.
Well, I, you know, I'm willing to go along here, and with the commitment that we revisit this in four or five weeks, you know, I have the disadvantage, I was not here last week because it was a Jewish holiday, so I totally lost all that discussion and results. And so I'm willing to concede that, you know, I may be missing something here. But I also think that, I mean, I'm hoping this commitment to look at not only the siding issue, but I, you know, I do think there was some testimony about the, the fees. And, and, you know, my fear is that we're doing this all on a cost of service, but it's really hard to size down on a cost of service basis.
So just, just as a point of clarification, it's somewhat apples to oranges to compare the proposed fee schedule here with liquor licenses, because that is, you know, on the liquor license side, a particularly vexatious state preemption, where they have, they have told us we can't charge anymore.
My point is, we're making some implicit assumptions about the extent to which we need to regulate this industry, which could be totally unfounded after this thing's been unleashed for a while. But, you know, we're still going to need to support the, the positions that we're funding, because that's just what we do, you know, we, we-
There'll be fee-funded positions if there are.
But not indefinitely. If we find, my philosophy is, if we find out we're over-regulating and we don't need that many regulators, we will have less of them.
Let me, let me, let me support my friend Dan Saltzman on this point. I'm interested in knowing whether we should expand the hours of operation. I'm interested in knowing whether we should be an early adopter of a single unitary permit, not two. I accept the spirit of the Margolis amendments, I just don't know how they, how they essentially work within it, so I'd like to know what, what you like and don't like about that. And I'm open to liberalizing the thousand-foot rule to make sure that the, whatever the criteria we pick doesn't exclude someone who, on it, and sort of, just a gut, equitively we think should be protected, just because on a date certain they didn't have their license. I want to make sure, the thing that Mr. Sugarman talked about, I want to make sure that, that the definition doesn't arbitrarily exclude someone who otherwise is a sympathetic figure, in our view. And, and I will join with you in asking, in, in looking at all those points, Dan. I just think we should adopt this now, we have a commitment to come back, and then, hopefully, the final hearing will be the final hearing.
Okay, now I'm just asking for a broader commitment at the relook.
So Mayor, I move the question.
Okay, so the question's been moved. After we vote, I will consult with the clerk right here and now and see if we've got a date we can name as a time certain. Let's take a vote, please, on the amended ordinance.
Saltzman?
Well, as I said, I'm, I'm going to support this today. I, I do want, I appreciate the commitment to look at these issues, but I, and these is plural, so it's not just the siding, it's, it also is the issues around fees, hours of operation, other things that have been raised. Get everybody in the room, and then let's hopefully have a unified front. So thanks for this discussion and testimony. Aye.
Fritz? Thank you, Commissioner Saltzman, I greatly appreciate that, that, that's significant. I'm going to, I would request, Mayor, that you don't work on the time certain for right now. I'm going to work with staff to do that. My goal actually would be to get it back to council by the 21st of October, which would then allow us to be looking to get any ordinance adopted before December 1st. Because we are, as I said before, we are planning to come back with our proposal for how we're going to roll out the licensing and many other aspects. This is something we're going to work through together. And with ONI's famed public process, I became the commissioner in charge of neighborhood involvement on July 15th. This proposal, part of it was supposed to come back at the end of July. I decided that we would wait and bring the whole package back together after an extensive public process over the summer. I greatly appreciate Teresa Marchetti and Victor Salinas and Ben Walters, our city attorney, for your work on this, and I appreciate all of the community involvement. This is going to be an ongoing, ongoing thing, it's not one and done. It's not even going to be ten and done, I don't think. We're going to continue to work on it. Commissioner Fish, I know you're late for an appointment, happy birthday, thank you for staying.
Happy birthday.
Aye.
Happy birthday.
Fish?
You know, I talked to a couple of people at the last hearing who had come in all very frustrated with the process and weren't sure they were going to be heard, and, and were pleasantly surprised that council members engaged their concerns, raised questions, you know, did follow-up. And I just have to say, in my experience on this body, that happens more often than We are up here sincerely trying to get to the right outcome, and we sometimes get it wrong, but when people come and testify earnestly and marshal facts and make arguments, I, I hope more often than not, people feel heard. There's a difference, by the way, to always getting what you want. I mean, I know that, I've been married for 25 years, I have kids, I don't always get what I want. But, but everyone expects to be heard respectfully, and I hope people feel heard, because I've learned a lot through this process, that people coming forward and testifying have made an impact, huge impact, on how this has evolved. So credit to you for taking time to help us get it right. The only thing left for me is, whatever the ONI public process, and Commissioner Fritz is, you know, could write the book on that, I'm expecting, Ben, that there will, Ben Walters? Ben?
He said he had another appointment.
He's right here.
He's still there.
So just give me a second, sir, I got to talk to my council. I'm expecting-
It's your other council.
-that there will be a meeting co-convened by ONI and our legal team, Rose Room, or wherever you want to do it, where people can, who have language concerns can come in and run it up the flagpole. That's different than having a public hearing and any other kind of feedback, but I want to make sure that people, because we're getting into the really refined stuff here. And I ultimately want to be able to ask Ben Wal, our attorney, what's the difference between this language and that language? So I'm expecting there will be at least one meeting where people can come with, with their proposed changes, and they can get some feedback from staff, and legal can take a look at it so that we get that advice. And that's separate from any other public process, and that's the basis upon which I'm going to vote aye. And I really appreciate this debate and discussion, because I think it's been actually very productive, and, and, and I think we're getting to the right place. Aye.
Yes.
I think I've said enough, I'm looking forward to that process and to getting back to this informal council session. Aye.
Thank you very much.
And now, do we want to set a date? You're saying don't, but I, my expectation is similar to Commissioner Fish, which is that there will be these discussions about language between staff and interested parties, and that we will return to the language of the, of the regulations in council so that Commissioner Saltzman and the rest of us that still have concerns about issues like fees and hours will be able to address those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody got that understanding?
You voted aye already.
I have voted aye.
So if I may say, yes, we will do that and more. All this and better we shall do. And there's a, a lot more to be discussed on this issue, and I, I will try to avoid, to the extent practicable as I always do, to have further emergency ordinances, because it's better when we have more time to deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you all. Re-recess till two o'clock.